I should have worn my purple.
Okay, we're all ready? You're gonna report for it?
Yes.
Okay, we're about ready now. It is now 7:09. We're gonna report out of closed session. Mohammed?
Thank you, Ms. Rayala. In closed sessions, Board of Education's approved settlement agreement, case number S-0284-13/14. The board was a 4-0. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Next, can we adjourn closed session? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second by Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed session closes at 7:10. Open session now is reconvened at 7:10. And may we have Zach Paquette up to the podium, please? And he'll be accompanied by Kyle Grimes and Brent Nix, and they're gonna lead us in the flag salute.
Place your right hand over your heart. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, boys. Did a good job. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye? We have, I'll make some.
Okay.
But next, we're gonna move on into the presentations. And we have Marisol Angulo is gonna help us with the DSAC students.
Thank you, Ms. Rayala. Good evening, everyone. Our first speaker will be from Frisbee Middle School, and it is Alejandro Ragoza.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, and Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. October has been a very busy month for student activities, but we are glad to announce that all of our events have been very successful. Our school-wide fundraiser was launched September 16th and was held for exactly one month. We so far have ordered, we so far, so far we have ordered and distributed over 550 cases of chocolate. Students that participated had the chance of earning a trip to Knott's Berry Farm and a trip to Disneyland. We definitely have a lot of students interested in these fantastic school-wide field trips. So far, a total of 200 students have participated, and 71 earned one or more trips. Next week, we are also participating in the nationwide Red Ribbon Week. We have worked in conjunction with the PE department in decorating our school to make every student aware that FMS is drug-free. Next week, we'll also kick off our anti-bullying campaign. Students are encouraged to wear superhero attire and shirts, et cetera, as we promote "Don't Be a Bully, Be a Hero." On the 30th, ASB is sponsoring our character-building video assembly titled "The Pledge: Together We Stand." The assembly will challenge students to take control of their lives and make a difference in the world around them. Students will be given the opportunity to sign an anti-bullying pledge that we plan on displaying throughout the school. On October 30th, we plan on having a wear-blue day as we unite to stomp out bullying, once and for all. We also hold our Fall Prep Rally next Friday, and the buzz around the campus is that the prep rally will be amazing. We get to shine the spotlight on all our fall sports athletes, and we also sell spirit items and cancer awareness ribbons. Next week, Wednesday, October 29th, we are hosting our costume party dance. Tickets will go on sale Monday and will cost $3. At the door, they will cost $4. We are encouraging these students to wear their costumes after school only, and we'll be having a contest and giving away prizes. This is all the information that we have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
The following speaker is Ethan Barnes from Casera Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members, the interim superintendent, and viewers. My name is Ethan Barnes, and I am the Vice President of Casera Middle School. Our family math night is tonight. Parents and students will learn about our online math support, First in Math, and the Alex program. I am happy to report that we are ready for our Fall Carnival, which is tomorrow. Our cheer volleyball and football team are up and going. We haven't won a game yet, but we are still hopeful.
I've been there.
On October 24th, we are very excited to have our very own district safety office and anti-bullying assembly. Red Ribbon Week starts on October 27th. On Monday, we will wear Mitch Mack socks. On Tuesday, we will wear a hat. On Wednesday, we will wear red. On Thursday, we will wear a team jersey. And on Friday, we will wear our favorite superhero shirt. Our Honor Roll Assembly for Quarter One will be on October 30th. Our character trait is safety. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Jenna Patton, accompanied by Tino Luis from Cold Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, and Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I am Jenna Patton, President of ASB at Cold Middle School. Our pumpkin collection has started for the Loma Linda Ronald McDonald House. We collected 114 pumpkins this year. On the 20th, we had our 3D movie, Money Machine, and Plinko for the students who sold over three boxes of chocolates and candies. Some of our students won over $150. What's Disney's favorite dance? The Waltz. Hope to see you all tomorrow, the 23rd, doing the Waltz. Cold Cougars are still in the race for first in volleyball and football. Cougars, loud and proud. Red Ribbon Week is getting closer every minute. We are ready to stay drug-free, because drug-free makes a better me. October 20th through the 27th, we will be celebrating Red Ribbon Week with a door decorating contest and dress-up days. On Wednesday, October 29th, at 5 o'clock, we will be hosting our yearly carnival for all of our families and friends to come hang out and have some fun with their students. We will have great and powerful taco man there for everyone's hungry stomachs and blow-up slides to play on. I can't wait. November 8th, Cold Middle School will be co-hosting a first Lego League tournament at Rialto Middle School. We are still looking for judges and volunteers. Can we count you in, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, I am.
This is Jenna, signing off. Thank you for listening, and good night, Rialto.
Our next speaker from JHU Middle School is Nirvana Moreno.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Nirvana Moreno, the ASB President at JHU Middle School. We have had a lot going on on our campus lately, from the middle school sport games to a snow day in California. Touchdown spike. Our girls' volleyball are dominating this year, winning every game this season. Way to go. Also, our football team has had a great year. Good luck Jaguars. A healthy me is drug-free. We are very excited to be working on a community service project with the local Girl Scout troop about Red Ribbon Week, as well as a canned food drive. What do you get when you cross a snowman and a vampire? Frostbite. ASB is looking forward to our Pally Mountain trip this weekend. Maybe it will snow, and we will get a snow day on Monday. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Our final speaker is Annalisa Valenzuela from Rialto Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, and Mr. Islam, and our viewing audience. My name is Annalisa Valenzuela, and I am proud to represent Rialto Middle School as ASB President. As usual, we've been very busy. We joined the Cold Cougars at the Regional CADA Conference with 16 other middle schools from San Bernardino and Riverside County. We learned some great leadership strategies and even a few lunchtime activities for our own student body. Our red ribbon and anti-bully activities have been going on, from wear-blue to tie-dye day. We've made our own tie-dye shirts. Twin Day is coming on Thursday, so if anyone sees our twin tomorrow, don't be shy to say hi. AdVit hosted a family magic night with almost 300 in attendance. The families played games in a carnival atmosphere while eating nachos and waiting for the show to begin. On Friday, we're heading to Polly Mountain Retreat with Cold, JHU, and Frisbee to get our leadership on. Some mental and some physical challenges, and of course, a little bow-and-hurl training, because you never know when I might need that. We finished out our month with our Fall fundraiser, ending with some students entering a money machine to grab some cash. Our dance next week is a middle school take on Alice in Wonderland, except there seems to be some zombies joining the party, so... But it's looking to be a sellout, so don't forget to come by and get your picture taken in our photo booth. On November 8th, the Cold and Rialto Middle School Robotics Club will be hosting a regional qualifier for the first Lego League competition. With JHU joining, that makes three out of our five middle schools represented. Mr. Martinez will agree, this is a fantastic event, and it is a feather in our cap to have it in our district. We want to make this an annual event so all of our middle schools can work on the STEM challenge and even have a district playoff for our own trophy and support Common Core. So please jump in and volunteer. Judging any part of the competition, from engineering to presentation skills, will leave you in all of the challenges they conquer. In exchange, they will give you a lunch, a t-shirt, and a filling diet. Our students are on the right track. I look forward to seeing you all next month with more exciting news from the Tigers. Thank you for your time.
This will conclude our middle school DSAC presentations.
Thank you, Marisol. Did a good job. Our next presentation, item B2, has been temporarily postponed due to illness of the recipient, and we'll come back to you with that honor and that presentation at another time. Moving right along, we're moving on to B3. We're gonna honor our REA teachers, and I believe Ms. O'Kelly has the presentation for us.
Good evening, everybody. And could I please have Mr. Chris Horn come up to the podium, please? Tonight, we honor Mr. Chris Horn as Rialto Education Association's Employee of the Quarter. Mr. Horn, see, I beat him to the punch. Now I'm supposed to ask him to come up? Mr. Horn was born in Los Angeles and raised in Altadena. He graduated from Marinatha High School in Altadena in 1998. Oh, you're a baby. He later earned his bachelor's degree from Cal Poly Pomona in Liberal Arts and completed his master's degree in teaching from Grand Canyon University. On August 2005, Mr. Horn was hired as a teacher at Cold Middle School. That's where I started too, 1980, yes. "My first year as a teacher, I taught 8th grade science," remembered Mr. Horn. "Then I took on the responsibility of teaching 7th grade social studies, and it has been a wonderful experience since." Along with being a social studies teacher, Mr. Horn is also the Social Studies Department Chair at Cold Middle School. He also sits on the Executive Committee of REA, the Rialto Education Association. "I really enjoy teaching our students at Cold. I have observed growth every year, so that's always good." "Mr. Horn has been married to his partner, Ramon, for seven years. They reside in the city of San Bernardino." "Chris Horn has been a site rep for Cold for the past eight years," replied Lisa Lindberg, President of REA. "He continues to represent members and keep them up to date on REA and California Teachers Association information. And he attends conferences on GLBT..." Which is?
Gay, lesbian, bisexual.
Oh, okay. "...relating to students and teachers. Chris handles problems at the site and works collaboratively with administration to solve any issues that come up at Cold Middle School. He has been active in our school board campaign and continues to be involved in the activities of the association." Upon receiving the news that he was selected as the Employee of the Quarter, he said...
"I'm very flattered. As teachers, we..." I don't remember saying this. "I said, 'As teachers, we really do our jobs the best we can, and to be recognized by your peers is a humbling experience.'"
And I couldn't agree more. So congratulations, Mr. Horn, for being selected as the District's REA Employee of the Quarter. Let's give him a big hand. No wonder. Okay. Would you like to come up, ma'am? Please? You don't wanna be in the picture with him?
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, they might think I'm his mom.
That's great. That's great.
This certificate says, "Certificate of Recognition Presented on Wednesday, October 22nd, by Rialto Unified School District Board of Education to Chris Horn, Teacher at Cold Middle School, REA..." Okay. REA Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations.
Next up, we have a presentation to CSEA, and that'll be presented by our Edgar Montez.
Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Rayala. Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. Well, tonight, it is my honor to call up Ms. Elka Hall. Tonight, we honor Ms. Elka Hall for being selected as CSEA's Employee of the Quarter. Ms. Hall is a bus driver at the Rialto Unified School District. She was born in the Republic of Panama, but moved to the United States, specifically Colorado Springs, Colorado, when she was just 20 years old. In the 1990s, she lived in the city of Rialto. She now resides in Fontana. Mrs. Hall, who has been driving buses since 1998, was hired by Rialto Unified as a bus driver in 2004. Working a double shift at RUSD from 5:45 in the morning to 8:45 a.m., and then again at 1:45 p.m. to 5:15 p.m., her routes consist of busing students in the morning from Lidle Creek and the Fontana areas. She transports students to and from Carter High School, Cold, and Casero Middle Schools. So any students that might be here might recognize her from those schools. "The student ratio after school is heavier. I transport about 40 students in the afternoon," she said. "It's a job Ms. Hall says she really loves." "A lot of people don't realize that the bus drivers are often the first school officials to come into contact with students." That's true. That's very true. "And they're the first ones to tell the students if they need to tell them something, too." "So we have a good sense of who we are transporting," she replied. "If the kids have a good morning or challenging morning, I always try to communicate and help them through. Offering assistance to fellow drivers also comes as a second nature to her. I try to tell all the drivers, 'Always say good morning to our students,'" she smiled. "I remember once when I was transporting a student who would always say good morning to me. I would always say good morning to, but would never respond to me. I never gave up. One day, it occurred to him that I won't stop addressing him. One day, he started responding to my good mornings. As drivers, we have to be disciplined about rules, but we still must make students feel welcomed." "Mrs. Hall raised three grown children, Gregory, 18, Monique, 24, Michelle, and Michelle, 28. Are they here today? Would you guys please come up?" Oh, Gregory's not here. And this is, oh, okay, and this is Monique and Michelle. Thank you for joining your mother here today. She also has a granddaughter, London, who is 14 months old. Is that London? Playing with an iPhone already? Cheryl Decker, CSEA President of Rialto Chapter 203, said, "Elka is as beautiful on the inside as she is on the outside. She's always friendly and possesses a great outlook on life. When it comes to issues in the Transportation Department, she is one of the first people to suggest resolutions." Rialto was lucky to have her transporting those great students. Ms. Hall's fellow coworker, Diana Cordero, added, "Elka is very loyal and dedicated to her job, and she has a great personality. She is a very helpful, patient, and professional bus driver who is always willing to listen to other coworkers when they come to her. She's very kind-hearted and funny. We all notice that Elka is always at work on time and always with a smile on her face, just as she is right now." When Ms. Hall was informed that her fellow colleagues that chose her for the CSEA Employee of the Quarter, she replied, "I told them, 'Okay, stop pulling my leg. It's not April Fool's Day yet. But when I saw the notification from the district, I was shocked. This is a wonderful honor.'" I saved you a lot of reading time. Thank you very much. It is really an honor to present you with this Certificate of Recognition, which is actually on behalf of CSEA. And they chose you for the quarter, so you earned it. Thank you very much. As a school board member, as a parent, it means a lot to me. Thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you, beautiful daughters, for joining you here today. And granddaughter London, she's too busy, she's on the phone. She ain't even paying attention to me. So here you go. And would you like to say a few words before? Would you like to say something before? Okay, please.
Good evening, Board Members, interim superintendent, and audience. I would like to give first thanks to God, because without Him, with Him, everything is possible. And for the honor of this day. Being a school bus driver is being an honor and a privilege, transporting your children safe to and from school from the last 10 years in this district, as I worked in another district before I came here. With a moving classroom of at least 78 children of different ages, I want you all to think for a moment the impact a bus driver have on that child on a daily basis. We are the first and the last adult they see in the morning and in the evening as it relates to school. When they get on and get off the bus, a good morning, how you doing? Have a nice day, even, goodbye. Make a big difference just in a little context. You help change the tone in that bus from day one. As bus driver, along with educators, we have a great responsibility to show positive influence on all students, because our students come first. Thank you again, CS, REA, Rialto Unify, and district members for this prestigious honor for today. Thank you, and good night.
Let's give a round of applause. One more round of applause. Muchas gracias, Ms. Hall. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Rayala.
Well done. Next, we have a brief report by Dr. Edward D'Souza. Oh, excuse me. We have RSMA, Clerk of the Board, giving the presentation, Joe Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. Can I have Angela Brantley join me, please? Angela, and I have this one thing. Her family calls her Angel, and I corrected it. She's actually Angel-A, Angel-A. Okay. Our next Employee of the Quarter is from the Rialto Schools Managers Association, the RSMA-selected Angela Brantley. Do you have family that you'd like to have come up? Yes, please, Edward. Bring the kids on up. Yes, we like to honor the whole family. Nice, nice. Okay, Angela Brantley is our Director of Child Welfare and Attendance. Ms. Brantley was born in Dayton, Ohio, and graduated from high school in Denver, Colorado. She also graduated from the University of Southern California in 1993 with a bachelor's degree in mathematics. She earned her MBS in Applied Mathematics from the University of Colorado, and in 1997, she received her Master's in Educational Administrative Services from Cal State San Bernardino. In 1997, Ms. Brantley began her career in the RUSD as a math teacher at Ike Eisenhower High School. At Eisenhower, Ms. Brantley... Yes, okay, okay. Stop dancing on the table. Ms. Brantley was also the math chairperson, the leader of the Eagle Prep Academy, and an advisor to the Black Student Union. In 2005, Ms. Brantley took a leadership role as the Title II District Math Coach for the district, and that same year, she entered administration as an elementary administrator at Casey and Hubanks Elementary School. In 2007, she was promoted to principal at Myers Elementary School, and in 2010, she became the Director of Child Welfare and Attendance. Ms. Brantley is also the leader of the RUSD Clothing Tree, which offers a... which offers assistance to less fortunate families. Thank you for doing that. On her recognition, Ms. Brantley replied... This is a long one, so I'm going to get out of this next page. Yeah, I'll let you read this.
I would like to thank my husband of fifteen years, Edward, and my beautiful children, Kalen and Cameron, who also attend school here in Rialto Unified School District. They inspire me to do my best to leave a legacy of love, compassion, and service to the youth of our community. I'm honored for this award. This recognition is extremely significant to me because it comes from my peers. And at a time when there are many changes coming from the state in how we address school attendance and discipline in an effort to keep students in school and in their seats where they can learn, those mandates do not come without their challenges to any district. This award says to me that I've earned the confidence and trust of my colleagues to lead the RUSD CWA department in our schools in every effort to do what's best for all children and even the ones who need a little bit more support and compassion. Lastly, I thank my superhero colleagues and RSMA President, Dr. Monty Stewart, for his recognition.
Very elegant, thank you. And, okay, lastly, I thank my superhero colleague, RSMA President, Dr. Monty Stewart, for this recognition. Okay, Dr. Stewart, who is familiar with Ms. Brantley's famous slogan, "Put on your cape, it's time to save the world." And if any of you have actually seen her cape, she was awarded a red cape with a... Was it C or CWA?
My mother-in-law made it from scratch.
Made from scratch, another family heirloom. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah. I haven't seen that one yet. Angela was the recipient of the Black Rose Community Service Award presented by San Bernardino Black Culture Foundation just last month. She has been instrumental in assisting so many families in need and continuously looks out for the best interest of students. She loves working with students and families. Angela has a great passion for what she does and is well-deserving of this award. Angela, Angel A., congratulations.
Well, next, I think we're ready for Dr. D'Souza. And he will be discussing with us the Integrating Science, Mathematics, and Related Technologies, also known R-I-SMarts.
So just to give you a little background, it's a $1.5 million grant that Rialto got in science for three years. I have my collaborators in the room. I use Peggy Wheeler because we wanted the CTE branch because we knew we had to do the CTE Integrated Pathway at high school. And we'll hear more about Juanita Chan and Cian Action. She is one who has a lot of energy, and she will be presenting the RI Smart. Just to give you a little background, these grants come in subject matter areas like science and math, and we have to have college professors helping us in the staff development. But we were kind of innovative. We wanted to take the science and actually use it to look at problems in our local community and high-interest topics. So for example, instead of looking at physics, we looked at locomotion. And we had a group of teachers from high school, middle school, and elementary who actually provided the staff development with the college professor. We also wanted to use the Culinary Institute. So we did a unit on nutrition, diet, health, and exercise. And you know that Rialto has the perchl rate problem, so our kids actually get to do that and solve it. So we call it a problem-based solving units, and you're going to hear more about it from Juanita Chan.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and members of the community. So I'm here to tell you a little bit more about the grant that we have lovingly nicknamed RI Smart. And I know it doesn't sound too smart when you say it, but it's super smart. You'll just wait and see. So when we get started, I wanted to start off by talking about the project goals. And basically, our biggest project's goal was to increase student achievement and to increase student engagement. And we wanted to do that by implementing research-based instructional strategies to improve not only science instruction, but also overall instruction. We also wanted to integrate STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, which we know those are the careers of the 21st century, definitely. And in order to do that, the format that we used was research in long-term, in-depth professional development. And that's where we are right now. So we did a summer institute in advanced science courses. So like Dr. D'Souza was saying, we had one in physics, chemistry, biology, geology, and also nutrition. As far as our timeline is concerned, this is a three-year project, and so we are in the first year. So our year started way before everyone else's year, in July. And we did our content sessions, again, like Dr. D'Souza said, based on project-based learning in those particular content areas. We also focused on inquiry-based learning, and the overall goal here was to focus on equitable access for all students. So we have new science standards that are coming into place, and one of the main fundamental foundations of those science standards is all standards, all students. And so we wanted to highlight that. There were some instructional strategies that we also wanted to highlight that are research-based again, and those are Science Notebooks, Accountable Talk, and Close and Critical Reading. Those are instructional strategies that have been proven to be effective not only in science instruction, but also in overall English and math scores have gone up from that. And so we also wanted to ask our teachers to really be purposeful in their instruction, and as we move forward, what the teachers are working on throughout the rest of this year is their action research project. So instead of talking too much about it, I thought it might be better to just show you a video so that you could see what it really looks like. I'm going to say that it's going to be a little bit loud, the music. So bear with me.
We're building a rubber band car to study velocity and speed and our problems. It's also to like... We've made a car once before, and it's to do like comparing contrast to see what we did wrong in the first time and what we could do better this time.
Based on distance.
Speed and like...
Speed and...
How straight it goes.
In the past, it was like you could read out of the book, and then you'd do some worksheets about it, take a test, and then after that, you completely forget about what you learned. And now, it's like you're learning about this hands-on, and it sticks in your...
Like now, it's like more creative than like last year, and like it was more physical in the book and textbook. It was like really, really boring.
Yeah, it's more like hands-on, and it's funnier. Because I used to find science boring, I guess, because all you do is read, and then you know tests and stuff. But like better like doing stuff like this where we get to work and stuff. Like now, we're working together on our car. Like I guess, like... But like the only thing I remember doing is like the boards, like those science boards.
Yeah. Just because it's more creative and more you can do yourself and like I explore.
Yeah. I like this way better, too, because like it's funnier, and I feel like you learn more actually doing than just reading.
So there are a couple of things that I'm hoping to just highlight from that video. One is what you saw was a progression of instruction from the teacher's perspective and then from the student's perspective. So you saw the teachers at first and what they were doing in the classroom, and then how that got transferred over into the classroom. And it's just the beginning of the year. So we have a lot of really exciting things coming up. The other thing I was hoping to demonstrate with that is the student engagement fact of it. The students, they enjoy it. They find it really encouraging. And that's what we want to do. We want them to be encouraged to pursue careers in STEM. And the last piece is the Institutes of Higher Education are community and industry partners. So wherever you saw teachers that were just kind of sitting, listening to someone, that was a community partner. So we had community partners from Arrowhead Regional Hospital. We had community partners from the city of Rialto. And then partners from within our own district, some of our maintenance and operations people. If we could just turn it back to the PowerPoint. There were sixty-three teachers that participated in the project, and that translates to, like it said in the PowerPoint, that translated to over 4,000 students in Rialto. And again, we are just kind of in our beginning stages. Can you press... Just press the X at the top right-hand corner. That's great. Okay. So here we are on the budget pieces. I just wanted to kind of full transparency here. So we submitted our very first budget report to the California Department of Education, the STEM unit, and we submitted that on September 30th, and we are definitely within the first-period expenditures. Our budget is completely balanced, so I wanted to share that with you. And our second report is due to the state on March 31st of 2015. As we look forward, we want this path of sustainable growth. So this project is truly only for three years, but we want it to continue. And so it starts off with hands-on science, incorporating more hands-on science and getting teachers in the habit of doing hands-on science. And that leads to engineering projects. Now, both of those things are going to be reinforced by the next-generation science standards, which we will be transitioning to in the next few years here. And also that collaboration between teachers and also parents. That was a really important piece. So all of our teachers that are in the program actually presented at the Parent Summit. That was last weekend. And we had five hands-on science sessions, and they were very well-attended. We also want to move into the realm of computer science and getting people more interested in that particular area. And so we would like support in doing that by helping to expand, as I was listening to the middle school students earlier, helping to expand those robotics programs and have some direct evidence. So part of that action research is that direct evidence of test score improvement. And then transition that into the very next phase, which I think will be really exciting for Rialto, which is computer coding. Again, that's something that's very up and coming as far as industry, particular industry in the inland empire. And then, last but not least, increasing overall graduation rates and the graduation rates that are A through G-ready so that our kids are college and career-ready. So those are the goals of the grant, and that's where we are so far, and we're really excited about it. In the video, like it said, we have UC Riverside Chemistry graduate students coming to a couple of fifth-grade classes. And we also have in the works in the next week here. The city of Rialto has a project on water sustainability, particularly at a location in Rialto, that they're really looking for the kids to be able to solve that problem. So we'll be excited about that. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
I'd be remiss to thank one more person, and it's Mr. Islam. When this grant started, I came to him, and I said, "Can I have 50% of a person's salary? It'll bring a lot to Rialto." So he offered that graciously. And Juanita's the science lead for the district. So thank you, Mr. Islam.
You're welcome. Next, we have Dr. D'Souza again. He'll be staying at the podium because he's going to give recognition to one of our California Science Framework team members.
Just to give you a background knowledge, 200 people applied to be on the state's science framework, the California Science Framework. And of those people, only 18 were chosen in the whole state, and they take teachers to write the California. Any framework is done by teachers, first by a teacher committee, then it goes on to different committees, and that's how a framework comes out. So out of those 18 people, Rialto was fortunate to have Juanita Chan, who represents us there.
Awesome.
So give you a little background of Juanita. You know, Juanita is... Basically, her mom worked in the district. She's Rhoda Bowers. She worked in the district for 22 years. And Juanita has been in the district for 12 years. She graduated at the age of 16 and went on to college. She got her BA with a major concentration in entomology, which is actually the study of bugs. And she did her MA in curriculum instruction in Chapman and a MA in educational leadership at Brandman. She has a multi-subject credential. She also has a single-subject credential in biology and her admin credential. So we are really fortunate. You can ask anyone. I don't know who has more energy in the world, but Juanita, she can hold a crowd. So in any grant, we have attrition in the grant. Juanita was able to hold all those 62 teachers all summer long, and no one dropped out. And actually, we had a 63rd teacher who said, "I'm going to stay even if I don't get a stipend." So we were fortunate to have that. But I do want to recognize Juanita because she has brought honor to the district in representing us as one of 18 people selected in the whole state of California on the science framework.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much for the recognition. The California Framework and Criteria Committee, basically what their job is to give the writers direction while they're writing the framework so that the publishers know what should go in the books and the test makers know what should be assessed. So it's actually a really big job. They are coming up with the models that the entire state will use for what the high school program will look like for science. So it's an exciting opportunity, and I feel very blessed and fortunate to be able to have that opportunity. So thank you.
As we move on to our final presentation, the Gifted and Talented Educational Program, the GATE Program Overview, presentation by Jen Harper.
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent, Dr. Islam, and viewing audience. Today, what I want to do is kind of give you a snapshot of what gifted education is in our district. Across the whole state of California, each district is able to define their gifted program. We have a gifted program in academics. You could define it in leadership, you could define it in sports, you could define it in a number of ways, music, VATHA, but whatever you define it in, you have to have a program in that. So ours is in, um, academics for advanced learners. So at the elementary and middle school, we do a cluster grouping model, which means that we have at least fifty percent of a classroom that has been GATE identified and the other kids in the classroom have a lot of high potential. We call at elementary a GATE cluster. At middle school, it might be an honors cluster. And at high school, instead of calling it GATE, we call it advanced placement or honors. And what we've done this year is align the middle school to the high school so that instead of being in a GATE classroom in middle school, you are in the honors program. And that way, they can see that there is some type of continuity between the program. And the honors program is more depth, complexity, and a lot more rigor. So the four I R's of differentiation is what we concentrate on and they were developed by Dr. Sandra Kaplan at SC from a Javits Grant, which is a federal grant. And this is the California model. We look at acceleration and pacing, how quickly something is being taught and how, uh, long we're staying on a concept. We look at depth, how deep it goes, complexity, how things are related, and novelty, how students give us the products. So you can see that I've used icons on the different slides and the icons set a picture in your head so that the teacher, as well as the student, knows what's expected of them. So in-depth, it's actually going deeper into the subject area instead of just a surface. We are looking to go, uh, explore language, details, patterns, trends, unanswered questions, that's always a good thing to look at. What about the ethics of a problem, rules, structures, and big ideas? Those are all the overarching areas in-depth. In complexity, we're looking at how things make relationship over time and interdisciplinary relationships, as well as seeing situations from different points of view. Having one situation, American Revolution, how did the industrialists view it? How did the agriculture people view it? How did, you know, this society? How did that group? And seeing that one situation can have multiple viewpoints based upon whatever the products are. Acceleration is just what it is. It's going through subject matter at a pace that takes into the account the ability of a student. And we normally do that a lot with math, because math can be accelerated when students know the information, we can compact what they know, and then spend time on things that they may not know. Novelty is what a kid gives us. It's not that we told them, "Do it this way." We give them choices. And so it allows them to get creative, it allows them to pique their interest and put personality into their own project. So it could be open-ended, such as they were going to do something with, uh, you know, maybe they read a book, they could do a play, they could do a characterization, they could, um, rewrite the story. So there's different choices that they may do. We accomplish the depth and complexity by looking at the different, uh, we call them the icons of depth and complexity. So when they're little to when they're older, we put up different kinds of pictures, charts, magnets, et cetera, and then that helps them ramp up the rigor. So if we want them to talk about the correct vocabulary, for instance, if you're talking about a fraction, you don't say the top number of a fraction. You want them to know what that word is, be able to use that word. So you introduce numerator and they would know what that is. And when they speak to us, we don't want them to say, "Oh yeah, it's the top part." We want them to be able to tell us what it is. So we might put the big mouth up on the, on the, um, overhead, the Elmo, whatever we have, you know, chart, et cetera, and that would help them remember, "I need to speak like a mathematician." Details, we use the flower because as the petals you, you know, pick off, each one is a detail. We use that a lot of times in, uh, language arts when they're writing. Patterns, of course, is found all over the place, math, social studies, science. We look at trends and we use a trend line to get them used to, "Hey, this is what we do when we are looking at different kinds of data points." Rules, structure is kind of like a family tree. Ethics is different points of view. The big idea is the overarching area. And then, of course, unanswered questions. There should always be unanswered questions. If you knew everything, then you need to go to a different content, a di, a di, a different subject area, or possibly a different grade, because you need to have some of that struggle, because when there's struggle, that's true growth. If you don't struggle, you don't grow. Think about driving a car. When you were young, it's like, "Oh my gosh." Going on the freeway, oh, now you don't even think about it. You're probably talking on your phone, you know, maybe having a drink of your soda and it's just second nature. But during that original time, you learned a lot because you were struggling. And that's what we want for all kids. We want them to struggle not to a point of frustration, but to a point of true learning. Complexity is looking at things over time, looking at relationships, past, present, and future within a given time period. We look at it from different points of view, as I said. Some teachers put on the big, uh, clown-type glasses and said, "Let's take a look at this situation," and they want to get the kids involved. They don't want them to be passive listeners, they want them to be engaged. So they will take a look at the different roles people may play, or just how does somebody view something? And then interdisciplinary relationships. If we're teaching something in science, can it relate to math? And yes, because math is the language of science, they go together very well. English and social studies, lots of things can be interdisciplinary. We do units across all four content areas. We work with PE, like orienteering skills, so they can see that, "Hey, I learned this kind of math, but I can apply it over here in physical education." So what is differentiation? That's our big thing in GATE. GATE is not field trips, GATE is not, you know, fun activities, GATE is to differ the instruction. So it is to differ, it is not to make different. It is to recognize the individual differences among the learners and is not to expect all students to learn in the same manner at the same time. It's to modify your time, your expectations, your resources, and the type of assistance for your learners, and it's not to teach the same task without any adaptations to meet student needs. It is to differ what students learn, which is the curriculum, how they learn, which is their instruction, and where students learn, which is the grouping. And using the flexible groupings, they can, you know, navigate in and out, maybe I'm a second language learner and I need to do some more basic things in English Language Arts, but I am a whiz in science and/or math. So it's not to teach everything in a whole group setting, it's to assign, it's not to assign more work. GATE kids hate that, hate that. "Oh, you're, you could do all this and then you can go over here." No, no, no. The teachers do a good job about differentiating, compacting what they know so that they can really work at the level they are at. And GATE is not to be viewed as, "Oh, we get to do something that's more fun and all the other kids are looking like, 'Hey, what about me? What about me? How come I can't do that?'" It's not to be viewed as a prize. So real quick, here's our standard in sixth grade, students will compare different cultures, customs, and mores practiced over time. One group, and teachers are very skilled at this because they've had a lot of training. One group might be working on, students are comparing the customs of ancient Greeks and contemporary Greeks. So maybe they're doing a Venn diagram, seeing what things are different, what things are the same. Another group in the same class might be looking at this problem. They're defining the causes and the effects of changes in a culture's custom over time. The teacher is still teaching the same unit, but kids are entering the unit at different points based upon where they are at. And then some kids will be at what we call DOK4. Students will prove with evidence that the customs and cultures are more alike than different within any time period. So in our cluster groupings, kids can go in and out. You can have high achievers, you can have regular kids, because of the fact with the cluster grouping, we are looking and differentiating for all kids, but definitely for our GATE students, which is our advanced learners. So what do we do? Just kind of giving you a viewpoint, because I could tell you a ton of math examples, obviously, but just so you know, I do know a few other ones. When we're looking at literature, we're looking at comparing the big ideas. When we're looking at, um, history, we're looking at different points of view. When we're looking at math, we might be looking at, uh, or, uh, language arts, rather, we might be looking at what details make one sentence more powerful than the other. In math, we're looking at trends. We might be noting that, "Hey, multiplication and addition are related. How are they related? Did you know you can only do two operations in mathematics your whole entire life? You can either add or you can subtract." But most people go, "No, I, I learned to multiply." Well, multiplying is a type of addition. So we want the kids to see that connection. When you're in algebra and you're doing quadratic equations, what are the symbols there? An addition, a subtraction, a multiplication, and a division. And division is related to subtraction. So if we break it down and not make it so, you know, horrific, kids are going to say, "Hey, I like algebra." Elements of depth and complexity add a layer to curriculum that immediately increases our rigor and engagement. It is absolutely good strategies for all kids, but it's necessary for GATE kids, otherwise they tune out. The products that kids would do help them to create new ideas. You see the STEM, you see robotics, those are kids that are creating new ideas. They do projects or products that are assigned that cause kids to present them in an original way. When PowerPoint first came out, kids were exploring with that because they had never seen that. Now that's like old hat, you know? What we have to get kids to do is, don't read the slides verbatim, because anybody could do that. How do you present, what do you represent? We want them to develop self-understanding from the projects that they do and we want kids to learn how to evaluate products themselves and of their peers. So in class, they would have a peer review and then they could address what the peers said about their project. So differentiation, you take a basic skill like summarize. We ramp it up into critical thinking by looking at determining and the relevance of it. We take a look from a basic skill of identifying, um, the main idea into judging with criteria. When you have to judge, you are putting some more rigor in it. You are taking a look at, "How do I judge? What are the factors I'm using in judging?" We're looking at categorizing into proving with evidence. Your science fair projects are all high-level. We're looking at facts. Plants need sunlight. But what is the overarching concept of plants needing sunlight? It's photosynthesis. So we want the kids to be able to say these words, we want them to be able to use these words, and we want them to know what they're doing. We go from, "The flag has fifty states," to, "It is an overarching concept of democracy." It's a symbol of democracy. And then my favorite, two plus an unknown number is three. You are actually starting on the algebra path. In kindergarten, they are doing algebra. When you give them the attribute blocks and they're sorting by color, by shape, by size, they are doing algebra. You either tell them how you want them to sort, or you give them the blocks and you say, "Sort them and then let me know how you sorted them. Why did you sort them that way?" That triggers much more rigor than just telling them, "Sort all the blue ones together." So, how do we identify GATE kids in our district? We use the Ravens Test. We went to this test about 2006 because we were not identifying the population that live in Rialto. We were only identifying one type of student. So we look for a, uh, test that reduce the language bias, because a lot of our kids are second language learners. And if you're not mirror imaging your district, then you don't have a good assessment. So we went to this, that's one of our measures. And what it is, it's pattern recognition, it looks at details, memory, spatial reasoning. Um, it's a very useful test, but like any assessment, it only gives a part of the picture and that's what you have to remember. The Ravens identifies potential. Potential in students, it's up to the adults to pull out that potential. So we look at standardized test scores, we look at academic grades, we look at a teacher referral and a parent referral and any performance impact. So right now, we have three thousand six hundred and forty-nine students in the program. I gave a brief overview to cabinet and I hadn't run the, uh, current numbers and when I ran them, we have that, that many children out of twenty-seven thousand kids. Our ethnic makeup of our district mirrors the percentage of the ethnic makeup of the district. So our GATE program mirrors the district. We are able to identify students who are not just English-only students. And we are able to identify twice exceptional students. So for the viewing audience, that means that you might have a, uh, maybe you have a disability in reading. You are not, um, able to read at your grade level, but you are excellent in math. So we can identify that and we can teach you in both directions. Your strength and then put in some support for your areas of need. So I gave you a little chart to kind of help you understand what that is. Thirteen percent of our district is in the GATE program. Our significant subgroups, African-American, we have eight-point-one percent. Hispanic, we have eighty-one-point-nine percent. Obviously, these are basically the percentages of our district. Our white Caucasian is five-point-four. Our English learners are about ten percent. And then our special ed, you wouldn't think special education kids would be in GATE? Yes, they are, because they are twice exceptional. We have two percent of our special education kids in GATE. So this tells me, as an administrator of the program, that we are looking at all kids and meeting all kids' needs. And that's the whole point of having any program, is to differentiate, meet all kids' needs. So, teacher-wise, we have a hundred and ninety-three educators that either have their GATE certificate or they are in training. When they are in training, they're giving up their time on Friday and Saturday nights, because we bring the GATE program here, we have a partnership with UCR, and they do a blended model of both online and in-seat time. And we have both teachers and administrators so that we can support the program. Things that we do in the district, I have parent nights in winter and spring through the Parent University. They, uh, work with me and we do different kinds of, uh, parent activities. We have classes for our teachers, we have parent advisory meetings, and we switch them from days to evenings, because more parents can come out in the evening than the day. So we accommodated to what the need of our district was. We have GATE committee meetings for our teachers so they get the latest things that are going on and we practice strategies so they can see what, um, is available to them. We participate in the California Association of the Gifted, the CAG Conference, because they always have new and cutting-edge materials. And then there's a huge parent strand. And in good times, we would send our parents to the CAG Conference. We have parent classes and for awareness and advocacy, and then we do book reviews. Last year, eleven percent of the graduating class of 2014 were GATE students. One hundred percent of those students had more than the minimal number of credits. So they were exploring beyond what was required. Forty percent of our GATE students were graduating A through G-ready. Is that great? No, but if, when you look at it in comparison to our other numbers, it's more than twice the number of our regular graduates. Just to kind of bring you up to speed, because some of you may not know, GATE used to be a categorically funded program and we used to get two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year for our GATE program. During the financial crisis, it was considered Tier Three and they swept all the funds. So our focus has been on the potential students, high-achieving students, and GATE students. I've gone out and tested thousands of students each year and now the schools are helping me test the students. We've partnered with funding sources in the district, categoricals, Title I, uh, teacher training. Different people had pots of money, so they became my best friends so that we could continue the teacher training, because the best thing you can do for a GATE program is to train your people. That's a lasting thing. A bus ride somewhere is great, but a trained teacher lasts forever. So what's the future? We are hoping to focus on our GATE students in middle and high school, because they tend to kind of check out. If you don't, you know, it's kind of like a mom, you've got to stay on them every now and then, "Hey, what's going on? You know, why are you doing this? Did you know that you could do this?" So we could support them, something like our Avid program, through tutorials, electives, and someone working with them to make sure that they are on track, just to let them know somebody does know who they are. We're looking at making sure they're in the correct courses and they filled out their necessary paperwork on time for their college applications. This could be accomplished by a staff member, much like an Avid coordinator, who would pay particular attention to the students. We need to re-establish some kind of funding source to support our high-achieving and GATE students with a variety of programs. Mr. Islam has asked me to do several budget proposals, which I'm working on, kind of like a Plan A and a Plan B, so we can look at, is it possible to restore any of the funding that has been swept? And then we're going to continue to train, 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 and support our educators in the delivery of GATE strategies, because again, GATE strategies are good for all kids, but they are absolutely necessary for GATE students. All right, I did that very quickly. Are there any questions? There's a handout that, um, I, you should have, uh, received, and if you have questions at any time, obviously, just, you know, let me know. But I wanted to kind of make sure that you understood that our GATE program does meet the needs of all of our students in Rialto.
Thank you, Jen.
Excellent program, thank you.
Thank you, Jen, that was spectacular, that was excellent, excellent work.
Very informative.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Ayala, may I comment?
Absolutely.
After I returned the conference Friday a couple weeks ago, and this draw my attentions when I'm hearing the GATE program, I engaged with my staff, and I thank Ed and Jen Harper to put together this report to you, board, and to the community to learn about our program, how great program GATE in Rialto Unified School District, and how many students in the program. And we're not a stopping point. We're going to raise that number as we move forward. That's my commitment to you as a board and to the community. So we are continuing going to raise that number, and you will see and feature the report, not present to you how our program is moving forward. Thank you.
Will we be seeing the GATE conference anytime soon?
We are hoping to do that probably early fall next year. We don't want to conflict with other state organizations right now.
Okay.
Yalla, have a parent focus.
Okay. Excellent.
And I just wanted to say, I too was at the workshop with Mr. Islam on the GATE program given by the GATE, some of the GATE staff over at San Marino City Unified. They were actually saying that a lot of people, a lot of districts can learn from their GATE if they have a GATE program. Their GATE program, people can help with Common Core issues. A lot of the GATE programs already implemented have been doing Common Core stuff for a number of years. And if the numbers you gave us, 40% of the kids are graduating with A- through G requirements. 100% of the GATE kids are graduating with more credits than the average student. I think there's a lot that our regular students can benefit from. Then also, they mentioned the testing system, the Ravens testing system. Are we using the newest one?
Yes.
We're using the most, the most, okay. That's a good, that's a good thing, too, because, like you said, there's a lot of students, even English-language students, that qualify for GATE, but can be easily ruled out because of language barriers and whatnot.
Right.
So that's, that's good to know. And thank you, Mr. Islam, for requesting this, this presentation on the GATE. Keep up the good work, and hopefully, we can get some, some help from our GATE staff to help us with other things for, for our other kids, too. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving right along, we're moving on to public comments. And before we begin, I would like to address that we be mindful of the three-minute allocation. And we have a digital clock here, and we'll, we'll move right along. And Mohammed, we have anybody with comments from the floor that, at this time, any person would like to speak that's not on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. The first person is Linda Silva, and I am not on the agenda.
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and the associate superintendents and community members. My name is Linda Silva, and tonight I'm speaking as an employee of this district, as well as a citizen of this city. I have been sitting in this audience for nearly three years now, and after recent items on board agendas, especially the last two meetings, it has really made me think about the children and staff in this district. When this board makes decisions that can potentially bring about negativity towards our district, our students, and staff, it upsets me. This board has recently instructed the administration of this district to contract with agencies and law firms that have staff with compromising reputations, and in the process, you are sacrificing the safety and well-being of our children. Why are you asking this district to hire agencies and/or people that have severely bad reputations and allowing them to work in our district? Once word gets out, anyone, including the students in this district, can do simple Google searches and see the things that have been done, the reputations that they have, or even better, their criminal records, should they have one. All of these things started me thinking. Everyone that we pay, whether it is with a paycheck or through a contract, is in one way or another an employee slash representative of this district. Contractors have subcontractors, and lawyers have assistants, so on and so forth, and none of these people are fingerprinted and researched by our district, and yet they get to work on, in, or near our school campuses and district offices. To be an employee, or even a volunteer in our district, you have to be fingerprinted and have a complete criminal background check. So my question to this board and the administration is, why don't we investigate every outside contractor and consultant who works in this district and hold them accountable to the same standards as you would me, a regular employee? It makes me feel that you trust a perfect stranger over me, a regular dedicated employee that comes in every day and works hard for the benefit of these, of our children. And our board, is our board going to begin the business practices of hiring people who have been fired from representing our city due to overcharging, or people who have public records of DUIs? And let's not forget the message that we stand when we hire people with DUIs and have been made public while we teach our children not to drink and drive. You, as our board, need to be more cautious and secure when you order these immediate hires. How do we explain these types of things to our children if they were to search out information on the internet themselves? After all, don't forget that our children are more technologically intelligent than we are as adults. Your actions and decisions should never have to be explained to the children in our district. They should have confidence in you and your decisions. In closing, the school board needs to take a better look at how we manage the safety and security of our children when it comes to any outside contractors, consultants, or even friends or acquaintances. Because just because they are your friends or acquaintances doesn't mean that they can be held to any less accountability or responsibility than me, a regular employee. Thank you.
Next, Lisa Lindberg.
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent, Mohammed Islam, and community members. My name is Lisa Lindberg, and I'm the president of the Rialto Education Association. I am here tonight to offer suggestion as you engage in your search for a superintendent. Many districts rely on reputable firms to do the search and are very successful in finding highly qualified candidates. In speaking with my colleagues in other districts around the state, I have heard the names of the following firms mentioned a number of times. Leadership Associates, Koska Group, Dave Long and Associates. And it has also been recommended that you consult with your own organization, the California School Boards Association, to recommend a reputable firm. Please consider my suggestion, as I believe it would be in the best interest of the students, the parents, the community, and the employees of the district, to find the most highly qualified person possible for the job. Relying on a single educational advisor to find a superintendent has been tried previously and really is not the best course of action, in my opinion. Thank you. I also have the names and contact information of those firms if you care to have them. President, Vice President Ayala, may I approach?
Please.
Thank you.
Continue.
Please.
Next, Angelica Ruiz.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Islam, and audience. My name is Angelica Ruiz, and I am the mother of a special-needs boy who attends Bemis Elementary. I want to ask the board, sorry, the school board, Mr. Islam, and the director of special education, and everyone responsible for special education, please take the time to go and observe all the schools and the classes of special education and the teachers. I have observed and witnessed how teachers and aides scream and disrespect the kids. How do they expect the kids not to have any behavior issues if the teachers and aides treat the kids like this? I ask for everyone, please evaluate the teachers and aides. They need help, training, and all the support necessary for the benefit and respect and dignity of our, that our children deserve. Thank you.
Joseph Ramirez.
I hope I'm saying the name right. Correct. Oh, Joseph, I apologize.
Good evening, directors and Dr. Islam. I want to please ask, okay. Buenas noches, mesa directiva señor Islam. Quiero pedirles por favor, estén seguros de todas las personas que están contratando para trabajar en educación especial como coordinadores y psicólogos especialistas y programas. Que tengan los conocimientos necesarios para trabajar con niños especiales. Por favor, visiten las clases de los niños especiales y asegúrense de que los, las personas que están con ellos danles servicios a nuestros niños especiales sean buenos profesionales. I have witnessed also, in the past five years of my son attending school here in this district, I've been residing here for over 23 years myself, I recognize some of you as my teachers from KOB and Eisenhower. And I have never seen such a thing where I have seen kids being dragged, being screamed at, not personally my, my child, but other children. I see the moms, and when I see them, I feel really embarrassed. I feel awful that I know something that happened to their child, and how can I direct this, this parent? And I am here to notify the things that are going on, things that a lot of us don't see, things that go on behind closed doors. I have witnessed it in the lunch area. I have witnessed it in the hallways. It's really sad. And we ask for help. Please pay attention to our children and what's going on in special ed. Thank you.
I'm going to read in English, which she had read in Spanish. I would like to ask that you please be sure of all the people that you hire to work with our special education children, such as coordinators, psychologists, and program specialists, that they be familiar with the, with everything necessary to work with special needs children. Please visit the classes of these, the special education classes, and be sure that the people that you are hiring, be sure of the people that you are hiring that give services to our children in special needs, and that they be good professionals. Thank you.
Next, Paula Velli.
Good evening, interim superintendent and board members and cabinet. May I ask, I do have two slips in there for two different topics.
Yes, you do.
Can I go ahead and take care of both of them while I'm up here?
Please.
It's really quick. Okay, the first one is really brief. I wanted to know, in the past, we had an attorney group, the Trajillo Group, working with our district. I'm really curious to know, why did we relieve them of their duties, and why do we have them back? That is my first topic. My second topic is in reference to Measure Y. I agree, and I understand, we have a lot of needs that need to be addressed, and I understand that there's been promises made when that was initially proposed. Unfortunately, choices were made in the past, but we keep dwelling on everything in the past. We need to move forward. We need to be cautious, look at what we're doing, pay close mind to that, but we need to move forward. We need to make sure that we're looking at taking advantage of matching funds, funds offered by other, you know, ways, you know, the state and et cetera. And we need to do this for many reasons. Yes, I understand it's a financial impact to the residents. At the same time, for those who don't have children in the district, they can look at as, if our schools are not succeeding, and our schools are not attractive to the homebuyer in general, they're not going to sell their house later. And first and foremost, our kids. There's many districts that are even more advanced in technology and structural-wise that are beyond our district. But if we put the brakes on where we're at, are we going to be able to compete with that? Are we going to have people want to even come to this district? So I understand, and I appreciate everybody's concerns and thoughts about, you know, what should have been done didn't happen, but let's move forward and make this happen because we can't afford to continue to go on without taking care of the needs and the issues that are at hand. So I hope we can do that soon. Thank you, and I appreciate your support.
Next, Stephen Figueroa.
I'm president of the Inland Empire Latino Coalition. I'm an education advocate for over 30 years. First, I'd like to address three issues. On the issue of GATE, because GATE begins at kindergarten or before. That's when you're identified gifted and talented. If you wait till middle school, you may have lost a lot of them in special ed. They get bored, they become behavioral problems. And that brings me to special education. You've got a great special education director here now. I've recently gone to IEPs, and they're completely different. So I'm going to say, she needs your support. These parents are very valid in what they were saying. A lot happened over the last few years, and there's a lot of mix-up with the staff, what to do, not to do so, you know. Perhaps you need to get your special ed staff together and, and just to say, this is the new special ed director. These are the policies we're going to follow, because you should know the ed code. They shouldn't be fighting with parents. They should be working as a team. And, you know, well, we don't want to look at the past. You also want to look at it because you don't want to repeat it. You don't. And so you've got to support. And there's a lot of reluctance from the psychologists and certain staff, because that's the way things were done. You've got a new director, and they're being resistant, and you need to know that. I think you heard it here today, and we're complete support, you know? And in who you hire, you've heard, you know? That's important, true. I mean, but that all depends, you know? I mean, if you ever look at me, if people say it was radical, but I've never been arrested. I speak my mind, you know? People said the same thing when Dr. Keenan says Archavos. They go, oh, we don't want them working here. They're rebel rousers. Look, look what they say and do. You know, you want to give people that fair shot, but when it comes, like, to special ed, it starts, you know, I often tell, I do a lot of administrative hearings, and I say, a cup of coffee can save you all the attorney fees in the world, just treating the parents with respect. You know, kids shouldn't be handcuffed. They shouldn't come home with black eyes. I understand one of your special education programs is at DUN. DUN is on the 1,000 low-performing list. So all those kids at the other list, Venus, the other one, that's also in the 1,000 low-performing. You have the right to remove your kid automatically by state law. Frisbee's the other one on the 1,000 low-performing list. So if your kids are going there, you have the right to say, I don't want my child here. I want them going, and you have to abide by that. So why would you have the autistic program at the lowest-performing school in the state? That's discrimination in itself. So it's not unreasonable to listen to the parents, treat them with respect. There doesn't need to be a fight or anything, you know? It's just, what's hard by saying, all they're saying is, please follow the ed code. Thank you.
Next, Marner Ruiz.
I haven't been up here for a while. And unfortunately, every time I come up here, it's never for good news. Right now, I get very emotional when it comes to special ed, especially when I have parents coming to me with their concerns. It's, I feel helpless to be able to, you know, tell these parents something. They want an answer. Why is my child being treated this way? Why am I keep, you know, being told no? Why can't they serve as my child? Why do they keep saying, you know, everything is just negative and negative and negative towards the parents. But before I go into that, I kind of went aside, but, you know, our kids are literally being verbally abused, physically abused, emotionally abused, neglected. These are things that you, the board, doesn't see, you know, the director of special ed doesn't see. You know, these are things that they don't come to you and let you know. You know, that would be a very brave person if they would come and tell you, "You know what? I just dragged this kid because I wanted to. Instead of helping this kid, I decided to drag him across the field, yell at them." They're not going to come and tell you that. So that's something that you really need to look into. Some teachers, we have the good teachers and we have the bad teachers. I want to give credit where credit is deserved, but all the teachers need training, the aides need training, you know, the site administrations need training. You know, the concept of special ed still being separated, you know, we need to, we need to get over that. Special ed children are the same, they're equal as everybody else. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to take more time. Everything that keeps happening, I have site administrators telling parents, when parents call the administrators and say, "You know what? I have this concern regarding my child," what do they do? They say, "You know what? We can't handle it. You talk to the director of special ed." What is that? You know, they just keep pushing and pushing parents aside. And that's not fair. It's not right, you know? And then what happens? The kids, they have behaviors. Oh, we blame the kids. What do they do? Let's just transfer them. They keep transferring kids back and forth, bouncing them back and forth. Why? Instead of giving them the help they need, the services they deserve by law. It's their right. It is just ridiculous and frustrating, you know, seeing this and having parents come to you crying. What do we do? Can you help us? You know?
Ms. Ruiz, if we give you another minute, will that be enough?
Yes, please. Thank you. You know, let me see. I do want to give credit, you know, to the director. She's doing the best that she can, and there's only so much she can do. You know, she can't be at every single IEP. She can't be doing paperwork, you know, investigations, you know, monitoring. She needs the support from her own staff. And then we have those, excuse me, again, the teachers that do care. I've had teachers tell me how they feel threatened by, or intimidated by saying, "You know what? This child needs this service. This child might need, you know, needs this help to succeed," or, you know, and they get threatened by that? Why? Why can't they say that? Why do they feel like they can't speak out and speak, you know, for a child? I don't understand that. That just blows my mind, why that is. It's not against the law. All they want to do is help the student. So why is that a bad thing? Again, needing the proper training, I think that's a major thing. You know, I too have observed in classrooms how they yell at the kids, aides yell at the kids, intimidating. We're talking about bullying. I'm so sorry, I'm almost done. We're talking about bullying. We emphasize bullying and we have campaigns against bullying, but the bullying is being done by the adults. And how do we have our kids defend themselves? They can't. Because if they try to, then, oh my God, they have behaviors. I've witnessed that myself. When I've said, "You just yelled at this kid. You just disrespected this kid, but yet he's the one that's going to get in trouble?" That's, again, that's something that you don't see. So I please, I'm asking you, just like every parent, take note of this, because otherwise we're going to be here every single time until something gets done. And you see, right now, maybe five parents? You're going to see more than that. You're going to be seeing hundreds of parents outside. You know how many students we have, specialist students. So you're going to be seeing them walking here, and I don't think you guys want that. Thank you.
Ms. Ruiz, you've given us a plethora of complaints, but no way to resolve them in the respect that without names of who to monitor, then, you know, we've got 27,400 students.
Exactly.
We've got 3,000-ish special ed students. You've got one interim, you've got four board members attending, five board members, and a student board member. You've given us an impossible task without more assistance from the parents. We need more information.
We can give you the more information. We've given you information, Mr. Martinez.
It hasn't gotten to our level at all.
Exactly. Because it stops. You know, a lot of the parents, they don't give them the information. You know what? You can go speak out. You can say, "It's okay for you to say no. You know, don't treat my child this way. It's okay." A lot of the parents are, they don't have the information. They don't give them the information. And this is an issue that we've been talking to you. This is not the first time you hear it. You know, why is it that Mr. Montes went ahead and suggested to do the audits? So especially, it has been a long time issue coming. This is not the first time you hear it.
I didn't wish to extend this. I just am saying that I need more information.
Solutions have been given to you guys. Solutions have been brought up to the administrations.
I need administrator names.
You want names? You want me to say it in public? I'll say it in public. Is that what you want? We have a list of names.
Just get the list to me, please.
Okay.
Perdón que me tomé el tiempo, pero somos del mismo grupo de apoyo. Este, ¿qué es lo que han hecho ustedes hasta ahora con las sugerencias que dio los que hicieron la auditoría?
Fueron 162.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fueron 162 las recomendaciones. Ustedes han tomado acción aunque sea en una?
Just a minute here. Is there somebody would like to maybe give up their time right now so that we can continue with order, unless we have a slip to speak? I don't mind.
Sí, está mi nombre también, perdón.
Okay, no, that's okay.
I don't have, I have a slip for item on agenda. This is item not on agenda.
Maybe she filled it out the wrong way. ¿Quieres hablar, Odita?
Sí.
Okay. Just go ahead and switch it and give her three minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Vicepresidente, para mí son seis minutos.
Oh, oh.
Para mí son seis minutos.
Okay. Six minutes? This is something new to me. Okay.
Because the translation is their expectation.
Oh, oh, sí, sí, entiendo eso. Entiendo eso.
Gracias, vicepresidente. Allá la.
No problema.
Sí, este, bueno, soy Celia Zelaya y soy la coordinadora del grupo de apoyo y como dijo la señora Ruiz, a nosotros nos preocupa escuchar que todos los papás vengan a nosotros y nos digan, "Oye, a mi hijo le hicieron esto, a mi hijo," hasta ahora, hasta los vecinos de las escuelas están llegando a nosotros porque ven la junta del por por televisión y nos están diciendo que ellos como vecinos están escuchando cómo maltratan a los niños especiales cuando los sacan al playground.
Hi, I'm Celia Zelaya, and I'm a member of Parents Support. And I wanted to talk about the way that our students are being treated. It hurts me very much. Even the people, the people in the neighborhood are coming to us, telling us how they're seeing these children being treated.
Sorry, correction. It's not the neighborhood. Well, I guess it's the neighbors or the residents that live within the school and they, like, behind the schools.
Yo escuché a Mr. Martinez que le hacía una pregunta a Mrs. Ruiz, pero yo también tengo una pregunta para ustedes, que si ustedes han tomado alguna acción en las 162 recomendaciones que dio el Estado cuando hicieron la auditoría para especial ed. Me gustaría saber si ya han tomado acción en algo.
Mr. Martinez asked a question of Mrs. Ruiz with regard to what recommendations she would give, but I want to ask the board members what they've done with regard to the 162 recommendations that was given during the audit.
Y sí, este, estoy de acuerdo con el señor Steve. Tenemos una gran directora de educación especial. Sabemos que es una persona, una gran profesional con muchos conocimientos, pero ella no es toda en el distrito. Entonces necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes como miembros de la Mesa Directiva de Mr. Islam, como superintendente. Yo sé que él está haciendo lo que puede tratando de ayudarnos, pero necesitamos que, por favor, de verdad, tomen acción de todo lo que nosotros venimos a decirles. Tal vez nosotros somos nuestros, somos sus oídos y sus ojos afuera en la comunidad y venimos también porque con nuestro, nosotros los elegimos a ustedes y poderoso venimos a exigirles, porque los elegimos y también están siendo pagados con nuestros taxes.
I hope I remember everything. Like Steve said, the new director of special education is a very qualified and very professional woman. However, she can't do everything on her, by herself. She needs the support of all the board members and of Mr. Mohamed Islam. Oh, and we're asking this of you because we elected you. And we're also, we're your eyes and your ears out in the community. And you're also being paid by our taxes.
Por eso les exigimos que tomen acción y les agradecemos que de verdad lo hagan. Por si no, vamos a estar acá, como dijo Miss Ruiz, no solo cinco, vamos a ser muchos y vamos a estar afuera también. Así que no queremos eso para nuestro distrito, porque queremos trabajar juntos con ustedes también. Por eso estamos viniendo a decirles, porque nada nos costaría venir, decirle a toda la comunidad, o que vengan a apoyar y nos vamos a gritarle al distrito sin haberles venido a decir qué es lo que está pasando, porque si entendemos de que son solamente los cinco, cinco miembros de la Mesa Directiva y seco Mr. Islam, pero sabemos de que la comunidad es grande y no se dan cuenta muchas veces de lo que está pasando.
So, like Mrs. Marne Ruiz said, right now there is five of us, but there could be more of us. There could be hundreds of us, and we don't want that. We don't want to get people together without first having coming, without first having We want to work together with you as a community.
Yeah, this is, this is not good because we're losing a lot of the message.
I know that.
Bueno, el primero es que nos escuchen. El segundo punto grande es que tomen acción. Que les exigimos que actúen, por favor.
And specifically to answer the question, what is happening with 160? I can't remember five or 169 with the special ed FICMAT report. Nothing is going on right now because the board is taking action on the contractual issues, not the special ed issues yet. And that came from one of the board members. And it is a large task that we, you know how large a task it is. The best thing I can recommend is get things to us in writing. Coming to the public podium is all good and well, but it doesn't get me the information I need to take action. And if you want action, then I need it in writing.
I think, maybe Mr. D'Souza or Ms. Valenzuela would like to just give us a brief update on some of the things that the district has been doing to address the FICMAT special education audit. We have, we have been, we've already had some work done, and you guys are doing some stuff right now, I understand. Si hemos hecho unas pocas cosas, pero todavía falta más.
So some of the things that we have done already is we've had the special task force that has met twice already, and I recognize some of the people who are there. We also hired three program specialists, all who started, and they will actually be given help and support to the teachers in the classroom. We also have done training in goal book, which is going to help specialty ed teachers to actually differentiate in terms of the standard for the grade levels. We, can you remember anything else? Norma, do you want to say a few words?
Website was created also.
Yeah, we have the website app, and I let Ms. Del Rio because she is wonderful and works hard.
I just want to add to that. I mean, that's, that's great. Of course, any positive training and all of that, that is awesome, but what we're talking about is direct in the classroom. There's nothing being done directly with the classroom, inside the classroom, and giving the teachers that direct training that they need. So that's fine, you know, task force and everything else is fine, but our concern is the way that children are being treated. That's something that needs to be addressed yesterday, not, you know, not wait till, you know, till we take care of consultants and contractors. No, the children need to be taken care of now.
And it's not just for special education, it's for all students and how.
Of course, but the special ed children are the ones that are suffering.
No, no, pienso yo de que nos estamos saliendo mucho y los puntos más importantes que debemos de tomar es de que dicen, ningún niño se queda atrás, se queda atrás, ¿verdad?, en educación, pero parece como que eso no cuenta para especial ed.
You talk about no child left behind. However, it seems like that doesn't go with, you don't use that with special education.
We have started our task force to address a lot of the FICMAT. That's not to say that some of the things have not been put in place, because they have. It's been a difficult journey, but I think, you know, we have had a lot of support from our superintendent, and I thank you for that and our board and our associate superintendents. One of the biggest things was that FICMAT did recommend two more coordinators, and I did request that in lieu of two coordinators, I'd like to hire three program specialists who will be providing support to the teachers. Those were approved, and I thank you for that. They've just started on board. As of today, all three have, are on board now, and their jobs are going to be going into the classroom, working directly with the teachers in the classroom and also providing more support to the administration as well. The coordinators, I'm down to one. Hopefully, we'll have the second one soon, but even that has been very difficult because they go to a lot of IEP meetings and also do a lot of putting out fires. And I'm the type of person that likes to go to the IEP, so I've been going to the IEPs myself. I think it's going to be, I don't think all this information falls in deaf ears, but we can't be everywhere at the same time, so we all need to work as a team, especially at the sites. And I have to say, with the administration I've worked with, they've been very receptive, and I think the school that I've worked with the most are the high schools. And so, but it has been hard. But I know we implemented a lot of things, a lot of training that's coming up, and we have another one coming up in the 30th administration. So it's just going to take some time.
You also trained all the administrators.
Yeah, that's what I said. We've been doing trainings at the principals' meetings, almost at every single one, and then there's another one coming up. And the kind of training, she's asking me what kind of training. We've done training on how to conduct IEP meetings. We've done it on behavior. The next one we're doing is how to avoid suspensions and how we do manifestations and the type of assessments that need to go along with it and the type of assessments that need to go along with producing behavior plans. Also, we are giving them in services on how to avoid placing kids in non-public schools but dealing with our kids, how to start taking some of our kids back, and the type of support that we can provide. So we're looking at some more support that we can bring in for that as well for all our students. And then we've also done training on how to write goals that are appropriate for them. But, you know, there hasn't been training for a long time, so it's happening, it's just been difficult.
I just would like to say that we know we have done already a lot, but we have a lot more to do. Ya sabemos que hemos hecho muchas cosas, pero falta todavía mucho trabajo. Gracias, y les pedimos que tengan paciencia con el distrito y con la Mesa Directiva, pero... pero sabemos, estamos bien informados que todavía falta mucho trabajo que hacer. We know we have a lot of work to do, which is ask that you be patient as we're going through. Right now, a lot of issues, a lot of issues that you guys are well aware of. And we're, we're hoping that we can try to get through everything one step at a time. Because if we spread ourselves too thin, we won't get anything done. But we know, we know we have a lot of work to do.
I just wanted to add that we do have the honor of having these ladies and other parents in our task force to give us communication. And let me tell you, I do have Celia at my office and, and, and Myrna a lot in my office. And, you know, it's, I think the dialoguing with them, with, with Mrs. Fuentes and other parents that, that speak to me a lot is very important, because I do take that information in and share it at my leadership meetings, because that's another thing we put in place where I meet with my leadership team and talk about the issues that we're hearing from parents and from administrators and teachers.
And the board, I'd like to give you a quick, from my perspective, these parents, I see them daily, weekly, and I listen to their concern and I recognize even though sometimes not sound like I know their last name or first name incorrectly I'm saying. But these parents being, we heard their concern, we are, we're listening. I have a, my associate superintendent instructional went to the classroom visit, last two days. And Jasmine can report this back to you tonight. To listening to parents' concerns that how teachers are dealing with our students. So I want you to know that, again, we, we are dealing with, but it takes, it will take time. We cannot just fix everything overnight. And I direct my staff, if, when I hear complaint, concern, not complaint, comes to the parents, I take as a concern. As the parents, I met parents too. When someone treated my child badly, I take it close to my heart. I direct my staff, I go myself to see, observe what's going on. And we put action plan, again, everything has a due process. You cannot say I can get rid of teachers tomorrow, or I can get rid of the A tomorrow. But again, this, this condition didn't happen overnight. It built up to where we see today. It requires some time to repair.
And I'd like to add that it's, and I've said this before, it's essential that the first person or people that, if the parents have a concern that they go to is the principal of the school and report it and report what is going on. The principal of the school can assign administrators to be out in those classrooms to make sure they're being checked on. They know the teacher, they know if the teacher has a reputation or whatever, if there's anything going on there. But if the principal doesn't know what's going on, it, it doesn't, it doesn't help anything.
I know, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mrs. O'Kelly. I completely understand that and trust me, obviously that is being done. But like I said before, I did mention how some administrators are letting the parents know. And like I said, I will give you the, the names of those administrators that tell the parents, you know what, I can't, you need, this is a special ed issue, you need to call the director. And they call Norma, and that's not right, that's what I'm saying. So parents are following through. And just one more thing, some of the parents that are here are brand-new parents. Brand-new parents to special ed. And those concerns are being raised are brand-new parents.
And I just, I really am upset to hear that an administrator told a parent. Are you sure it wasn't in the context like the administrator had tried to help and the parent didn't?
Trust me, no.
Okay, all right. Then we need those names, so we can address that situation.
Maybe another minute, please, and then we can, we have quite a bit still.
I think the board should pass a resolution and, and set up a mechanism to address the concerns of these parents and, and that there need to be a monthly or quarterly, a, a, a report on, on how things are going. And that also, I, I understand from various persons, parents that have their children in, in special ed program, that they are recommending medication for some of them, and that needs to be looked at. We don't have a, I think that, that we should take a very serious look at this and, and, and also suspension of some of these kids that are in special ed. That's a very critical problem also. And, and, and these parents have concerns and they need an answer. And, and, and the motion, there needs to be a motion at this time so that they, this, this can be a priority and so they can be, so they can, so there'd be a follow-up and these, and these parents be informed of what's going on.
Disculpe, Vice President Ayala, este, yo, a mí me gustaría pedirles que hace algunos años, este, ustedes fueron, hicieron una junta especial en el Hall de San Catherine. Yo les pido, por favor, que si me conceden eso otra vez, para que todos los papás de especial ed puedan ir a, porque yo entiendo de que hay otras, otras, este, necesidades, otras preocupaciones, y yo les pido, por favor, a los, ustedes ya estuvieron una vez, me hicieron esa junta ya con mi grupo, por favor, se les pido otra vez que si consideren eso, este, para que los papás puedan expresarle todas sus preocupaciones.
There is, there is one problem with meeting with a, a larger, larger group of parents, please. Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ayala, I, Mr. Ayala, I want to remind you that a few years ago, we had a program in the Hall at St. Catherine's Church. And a lot of the parents went and board members went, and the parents were able to address their issues with the board directly. This was not a religious event.
And that is all good and well, but.
And we'd like you to please consider doing this again.
We can do that again, but the problem is we still have too few bodies implementing what the parents are telling us. We've got this many parents and it comes down to a bottleneck of one person in charge. We, we are supporting her.
Then I would, one of the suggestions would be then give her more coordinators. There's only, she only has two right now. And are you replacing the other one? Have you hired somebody else?
You know, I, I know some of the board members here will probably be happy to stay after the meeting. I, I know myself, I'll be happy to stay. So maybe we can further the discussions and that way we give opportunities to close this meeting. We have still quite a bit on the agenda.
Por favor, les pido que consideren mi petición, porque el resultado de la junta que hubo en San Catherine fue muy bueno. Los board members que estuvieron saben de que fue muy productiva esa junta. Así que, por favor, les pido que consideren nuevamente esta petición. Gracias.
Thank you, gracias. I just want to say that really quick.
Can I interpret them?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Again, I ask you to please consider this, because during that meeting, we had very good results and it was very productive, so please take this seriously into consideration. Thank you.
Gracias. I, I just really quick, Mr. Ayala. I, I know it can be frustrating for people to have to wait for translations or to listen to translations that don't understand. I know it must be frustrating for people that feel that we've already been here long enough, but parents' concerns need to be taken serious. The, the district's been through a lot, through a lot, we're going through a lot. And, and this is just one of many issues that are very serious to, to this board and to this district. And we know and we accept that we've got big issues with special education. The FICMAT report proved it. Board, certain board members suspected it from a long time ago. People from the community have been coming, expressing concerns for a long time, for many years now. Advocates have been coming, advocates are still coming, parents are still, still coming. So my question is, what have, what have we really done? As, as far as addressing head-on these issues, what have we really done? We're in grave need of help. This district is in grave need of experienced, knowledgeable leadership to meet these issues head-on. We as board members are not, this is not our job to address these issues. If we do them, if we start taking care of them, then what do we need everybody else here for? So my, 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 what I just want to say is, I, I know it might be frustrating to people to hear parents go on and on and on, but what else do you expect when they've been coming for at least four years, since I've been on the board before that? They have kids too, they have kids with special needs. Their kids are just as valuable as anybody else's kids. And this is just a reflection, this, what's going on here is just a reflection of the aftermath of the pieces we're left to pick up, of the house cleaning we still have to do. So as I look at this board and I look around, we still got a lot of issues to take care of. We've got a lot of things and we're not putting anything in the back burner, we're not leaving anything behind. We're just hoping that we get help soon, soon. Because we, we might not have to wait, we shouldn't have to wait till the end of the year or for a search firm. If we need help now, we should get help now.
And Mr. Islam, can we start by setting up the meeting Mrs. Ayala requested?
Yes.
As she had before and then, but just make sure it's not, Thursdays are good now. My babysitting days are Tuesdays and Fridays, so we can, we can do Thursday.
Anybody else on the board, so we can move on, please.
If I bring the baby, we won't get anything done.
Board, let me be clear, you like to be invited in that conversation with the parents, correct?
Yes.
And, okay, you, you got it. Thank you.
Only two members can go.
That's correct.
Mr. Islam, do we have anybody else?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please.
May I ask, thank you, Mr. Montez, only, because of the Brown Act, we can only invite two member present. So any two members, it's your call.
I win, I go all the time.
Let, let the parents choose who they.
Okay, then I'll speak to the parents and staff preference, yeah. And, and for your information, I have discussed this with my staff, the monthly called problem-solving sessions with the parents, parents probably don't know yet, that discussion has happened on Monday. So I'm glad that here tonight, that was in conversation we had. We like to bring open discussions, listen to the parents, then draw the plan. Without listening, you don't know what, what, what plan you are going to implement, how we're going to resolve all these issues. So my take on it, first invite the parents, have, listen to them and then go from there. So I will, I'll send you the confirmations beginning as soon as we can.
And we need to get the names of the specific schools that they have heard these complaints about, so that you can address that with the principals and whatever.
Yes, I will do that and I will provide that also to you. If I was engaged with the parents, collect those concerns, staff members plus principals and others. I will, I'll definitely provide the information to you.
And we're still on C1, which is comments not on the agenda.
There's none, but we do have items.
On the agenda.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Ayala.
Then we're moving on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ayala. The not, items on, on agenda, the first person, Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administrators, and view the audience. My name is Russell Silva and I'm a Rialto resident. The Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, FICMAT, was created by California Assembly Bill 1200 in 1992 as an independent and external state agency. FICMAT's mission is to provide proactive and preventative fiscal, business, and management review services that help local education agencies comply with fiscal accountability standards and incorporate best practices. FICMAT has performed more than 1,000 reviews on K-12 schools, county offices of education, community colleges, and charter schools. So why is this board suddenly questioning the audit report and the findings of this highly reputable and respected agency? This board, after much debate, approved for the audit to take place and the audit that was presented to the board on January 8th of the regular meeting of this year. Since that meeting, none of you have discussed any issues having, that you had with the audit. However, you certainly used that audit to pressure the former superintendent to take an early retirement. And now, after nine and a half months, why are you questioning the report and the findings of it? Now I'm speaking to you about agenda item K 6.1, where you have been asked to ratify an agreement with a law firm to further review the FICMAT report and documents to support the report. The agreement came, became effective October 9th, 2014, the day after the board meeting. But the agenda of the last board meeting had nothing within it that referenced the approval of any agreement. So just when was this agreement approved? Was the agreement discussed and voted in closed session? According to the closed session agenda, it couldn't have been, because it wasn't listed. But moreover, Board Bylaw Section 9321 doesn't allow these types of discussions to incur unless it is under litigation. And then Board Bylaw Code Number 9321.1 requires that if you, if you vote on an issue, you're supposed to disclose that vote and share it with the audience prior to the reconvenance of the open session. If the agreement was discussed and voted, was taken, then, then not only have you violated two bylaws, it could be considered the Brown Act violations. Furthermore, who is the law firm of Guterres, Fierro, and Erickson? What qualifications do they have that enable them to audit the audit of a highly respected independent state agency? If the audit is required, was more than one firm offered the opportunity to bid on the work? Or was it just someone who decided that audit wasn't required and they brought in someone they knew that could do the work? Smells a little like the former superintendent here. The contract also stated that it was not to exceed 10 hours, but based on how I've seen contracts.
Can you finish in one minute?
I can finish in one minute.
Thank you.
Not to exceed 10 hours. Based on how I've seen contracts of this nature in the past three years, they will probably bill at the highest rate of $200, $240 per hour and then come back and say they need more hours, because they just had so much work to do. So then we will have an amendment after an amendment after an amendment until the board approves enough amendments to pay them, not just the $2,400, but possibly as high as $24,000 or more. When is this district going to stop being a cash cow for consultant firms or friends of friends looking for easy money? Because if this continues, then the game hasn't changed from the former superintendent that was here. We just have different players, taking funds from children and putting this district at risk of, of going into receivership. Thank you.
Next, Brian Ruiz.
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent and the audience. My name is Brian Ruiz, I'm with Xerox Corporation, I'm the Director of Sales for Southern California. I report to Ian O'Donnell, who's the Senior Vice President for Xerox, and we're your current provider for all your managed services, in two services, managed services and multifunction devices. And I'm, I'm going to review a letter that Ian sent out to the board earlier. And this is in regards to the RFP 1415004. And that Xerox is requesting that we also, USC postpone the decision until all information can, can be considered and the district makes an educated and facts-based decision and financial decision on the current state of that RFP. That decision, if we hold off, will allow us to evaluate and provide a substantial savings and will also result, and it shouldn't be a problem, since the Xerox contract doesn't end till the end of December. I'm not sure if you're aware of the granular details associated with the decision to cancel the entire Xerox contract and the district's decision to choose Conica Minolta, but we were given a cancellation notice before the RFP was even due. The district has canceled, canceled the entire contract, despite the fact that the RFP did not have the entire services of the contract. So it's canceled more services than what was actually in the RFP. This decision, it did not include more than half of your print capability in a print-capable RFP, and it's kind of puzzling to say the least. I don't think the board realized that Xerox could drive $47,000 per month in savings with that printer fleet, which Conica Minolta could not. Your current, current award will leave the schools and the teachers without the ability to get their work done by removing over 1,400 printers and contracting after the fact to cover the capability shortfall, which will cost you more. Either way, you know, this relates to over $1,000 more in costs that weren't quantified. In addition, the district has a, a high-end production system that they virtually paid for on a two-year agreement to pay more for that. And why not, would you just not buy that out and keep that and use that asset at a lot lower cost and a better technology than any other vendor out there? Therefore, we would like to ask that you set aside the decision on the RFP and allow us some time to review with you the, the analysis of how you could actually save $47,000, and we are the lowest-priced vendor, to help you save money so you can reinvest that money back into these education programs that I was witness here today. This is not. This is not, and it's not about selecting Xerox or Conica Minolta, but it's about making a fiscal decision that's responsible to provide the lowest cost in the infrastructure that Xerox is willing to provide you. And you could drive over, close to $50,000 in cost savings and not take away 1,400 printers from the teachers. Thank you very much. I would like you to re-decide and give us that opportunity to talk with you. And again, our contract doesn't end till December, so we have that time.
Quick question for you.
Please.
Why didn't you give us a lower price initially? Why are you offering it now?
So, so we did. So we did, and it's part of this memo. We did articulate this within the process. It was someone in the district that shared with us that this was not going to be part of the plan. And when we asked them exactly, why would you not, why would you just remove those printers? This is a statement. They shared with us that removing all of the printers, which is completely unrealistic as it would dramatically impact the productivity of the teachers and staff and in the class disruption, would be irresponsible. But it still wasn't part of the RFP process. But you canceling the Xerox service, that's not part of the RFP. So we would be removing those 1,400 printers. And, you know, to think about a teacher walking 300 yards to pick up two pages of paper, that's unrealistic. And we haven't seen any unified school district ever do that, nor will you. You will be reinvesting back into those printers, which would make the total cost more and then you would lose out on the $47,000 cost savings we offered.
Thank you for dancing around the bush and not answering my question.
So why that, it was part of our response. And that's why our price seemed a little bit higher upfront because we included two services versus one because we knew that you couldn't remove 1,400 printers. So that's why we offered $40,000 immediate savings.
Do you need one more minute?
Well, that's pretty much the response is we did offer it. That's why we came in second place. And our price looked higher because we incorporated both of the services that you're canceling versus the competitors were offering just one.
But I think the question was, you said earlier that you could offer us a significant savings now.
$47,000.
And the question was, why didn't you give it to us at a better price to begin with?
We did. So originally, in the, in the old contract, we saved you a few years ago $60,000, which we published in a case study that went nationally because we saved you such a large amount of money. And then this time around, through the process of the contract, we came to you with another $47,000 cost savings. Plus, we're giving you the capability to buy all your printers for $1. So now you have those as an asset and you just pay for service. So we did come to you with that, but then part of the RFP process, it discredited all of that. And so we have to respond to the RFP. We responded with the complete solution because we know that's what's needed for your organization with the cost savings, which then made it look like we were just a little bit higher than Conica Minolta. But Conica Minolta wasn't providing the full scope of work.
So what is it you're asking us again? You're asking us to let you, let you come back and present a full proposal?
Correct, and include the printers and allow us to show you and demonstrate to you financially how our solution would save you $47,000 and be the lowest-priced solution than anyone else in the industry as far as who you scope to on the RFP.
Could you get us that by the next board meeting?
Yes, I can.
Board, may I respectfully ask our purchasing managers here? You'd like to clarify some of the issue, could you please? Daniel Distola is here. One thing, Board, I want to remind you, we went through the bidding process, which is a legal requirement. And you, and you remind every one of us transparency, transparency. We're doing the transparency. We went through the bidding process. I will ask Mr. Distola explain to you what, how we get there.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a long night so far.
Thank you for having clarity here.
Yeah. It's funny because I'm listening to this gentleman up here speak and I wrote the board agenda item. I mentioned the word copier four times. I mentioned the word printer zero times. Here's the RFP. You can look at it. You'll find the word copier in here numerous times. You'll find the word printer in here zero times. I didn't ask for a printing solution. The board agenda is copier replacement, not copier and printer replacement. The letter that they sent out, I counted it. They mentioned the word printers six times. They mentioned the word copier once. And that was just in the title of my RFP, copier replacement. I, I don't like to do this publicly. I think this is unprofessional. It makes both of us look bad that I have to get up here and do this. I didn't ask for a printer solution. I asked for a copier solution. They weren't the lowest priced on the copiers. They didn't include a printer cost in their response.
So we will not be losing 1,400 printers in the classroom?
I never, I never said that we're going to be removing 1,400 printers. We would be replacing 1,400 printers. That's a big difference. I never said the word remove altogether, replace.
And the board item tonight you have for approval, it says, if you read the title, it's called copier replacement. There's no printer, it's not there at all.
Okay, but my understanding is that if we break the contract or lose the contract with Xerox, that they will take those printers out, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The contract...
Yeah, let me speak to, that is correct. I'm working with other companies right now to bring you a printer proposal in three weeks. It will be on the board agenda item three weeks for the printer...
We would obviously have to pay for 1,400 printers.
That is correct.
Let's, perhaps we should get a better grasp of the whole issue. Let's give the benefit of the doubt. The last thing we want to do is leave our teachers or any of our staff members struggling or having to walk 300 yards, you know, for two pieces of paper. So if this is going to be two separate contracts or two separate bids to do the work of what one provider is giving, then probably it's going to cost either the same or if not more. How about we get better information on the whole thing since we do have until December?
If, if, can I add something? If we wait three more weeks?
Then we cannot do it.
You might as well just give Xerox the contract. Because I cannot, November 12th, starting on November 13th, get another vendor in here to replace 100-plus devices and refurnish that print shop? It's impossible. I can't do it.
And Board, I'd like to remind you, this is one of the vendor in the FICMAT report. And I've been dealing with the Xerox last two years since I've been here. Their price, way overpriced. They give you the catalog. We don't need a catalog. We need a Toyota Camry. And that would pay the premium price. Every printer, we paying a lot of money, lot of money. We don't need that type printer. And it's, and you heard this...
It would have helped to have the one you want and everything we get with that and what's that going to cost next to Xerox so we can look at it and make an informed decision. I do not like to just come in here and blindly vote for something that costs so much money without all the information.
But I'm not, I'm not asking to, I'm just asking you to pass the copier RFP tonight. We can worry about the printers three weeks from now. I'll get you that information.
Can you guarantee me it will cost us less doing it that way?
I can guarantee you it will cost you less.
Yes.
With new equipment. If we keep, if we keep their equipment for a dollar buyout, of course, they're going to come in cheaper. But we have old technology then. And you, Mr. Martinez, said it perfectly. That $47,000, why weren't we getting that all along? When this contract was renewed two years ago, why didn't we get that $47,000 discount then? Now it's panic time.
Thank you.
So my question is, we will be getting the exact same number of copiers or more and the exact same number of printers or more for less money?
Correct.
And Board, this is not the first time we've told them their contract will be terminated. I have not met this gentleman tonight, who is here tonight. I talked to their senior management people, their Vice President of the company, meeting after meeting. We negotiate the contract. They're not willing to do that. They're holding us because the contract is a legal document. I could not renegotiate. So as a result, what you're getting today is a work through the last two years. Mr. Daniel Distola is bringing the final proposal tonight to terminate the contract. The contract termination discussion happened two years ago since I've been in the district.
I would have to terminate the contract regardless. Or even according to their paperwork, which I have here, it would start rolling over again. I had, I had to terminate the contract. Even if we decided to go with Xerox, I still have to terminate the old contract. I did nothing legally wrong by terminating it.
You already terminated it?
That is correct. I sent a letter of termination to end December 31st when the contract does, just to protect us.
We just need a vote.
All right, well, thank you.
Let's thank them.
I've heard enough myself.
I'm working on this. You got one minute.
Okay, thank you. You know, I just want to talk about that is that financially, right, from the technology, the printers, we provide service. It's financially responsible just to make a decision and purchase that printer for $1. The fleet for $1 and put it on a service, that'll be a lot more money so you can use the money to reinvest it. Furthermore, two years ago, we did renegotiate the contract and we saved $60,000. And based off of that, we got information and we did a case study that we launched on how happy Rialto was with that, that we were able to use you as a benchmark. And then we came back again with another 47 because what happens is we could offer it now because depreciation of assets and our cost structure, basic technology infrastructure goes down. So now we have that capability. So even if we, if you want to move forward with the copier decision, that is fine. But financially, the production printer, which you've already paid for, you could buy it out and have better technology at a lower price. And then on the printers, you could buy the printers, you know, for a dollar and put it on a service contract and save tens of thousands of dollars. That's, we would just ask for us to review that and make another decision at the next board meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. And thank you, Mr. Distola, for coming up and providing us with information. These decisions aren't easy and this is why we get support from all different ends here. Next person?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. One more, Michelle Sanchez.
Thought you'd never get here, huh?
I thought I would never get here. Good evening, everyone. I will try to be brief and make my point. I'm Michelle Sanchez. As many of you know, I'm a resident of Rialto. And I'd like to express my concern regarding the reference item K6.1 on the board agenda, as did Mr. Silva. He almost stole all my thunder. But great minds think alike. So why does the board find it necessary to engage a law office to review the FICMAT report? FICMAT was created specifically to assist local education agencies meet and sustain their financial obligations, promote sound financial practices and efficient operations. And that is in, that's a quote from the report, as are many of these other things I will be saying this evening. In their executive summary, many issues found are not due to lack of purchasing policies, staffing, or knowledge, but due to circumvention of such policies. Infidelity to the policies and procedures have led to concerns that the inappropriate and inefficient use of district funds have occurred. These weaknesses appeared mostly through lack of adherence to policies and oversight at the highest level of administration where the purchasing department was bypassed and procurement procedures circumvented. Many orders were placed without proper district purchase order and several contracts were approved directly by the superintendent or the superintendent's office. Page 23 of the FICMAT report states, "The district's internal controls, the principal mechanism for preventing and/or deterring fraud or illegal acts have been compromised by a lack of adherence by the highest level of administration." Recommendations included, prohibit the processing of contracts that circumvent the procurement procedure system. Establish a district environment led by the Board of Trustees," that's all of you guys, "and the highest level of administration of high ethical conduct and no tolerance for inappropriate actions." If this item on the agenda does not qualify as an inappropriate action, I don't know what would. It's backdated. I can't do that in my job. I tell people, if you buy something before there's a PO, you bought it. I'd be fired for doing something like that. This has the potential to turn into another RJ Allen and Associates nightmare. There's no not-to-exceed amount. And for all you know, it could end up costing at least $6,100 or more if the scope somehow changes, which is what happened with RJ Allen and Associates contracts. And I just want to let you know that this very brief review of the FICMAT report has been brought to you free of charge.
That's all.
That's all?
Yes.
Okay.
It's nice to get something free. Thank you.
My bearings here. Next, we have a public hearing and that item has been pulled, D1. So we'll move on to the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. We're looking at approval for consent calendar items, reference E through J. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
And I would just like to make a comment on G4.
Okay, so we have G4.
Just, of course, I read the write-up in the back, but it would be nice to have the name of the school included in the brief item there.
Okay.
I was looking at it going, what students, advisors, and parents? Just a reminder.
Any other discussions on any other items? Okay, preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have discussion action items. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. We're looking at items, action items, K1 through K9. Do we have a motion?
Board, discussion, point of order, actually. It's time that we start complying with the process. Discussion action items need to be discussed and voted on individually. So from now on, please direct staff to strike. The action items will be enacted in one motion. We can't do, we already have a consent calendar. We can't do the same thing for the discussion action items. They have to be discussed and voted on individually. And it's been brought to our attention before and for some reason, we just haven't got around to doing it that way. But we need to start doing it that way, so we might as well start tonight.
Sure. We'll take care of it.
The board's okay with it?
Okay with it.
Are there any objections to that suggestion?
No, that's what I was told at two CSVA conferences, that they're supposed to be read individually and voted on individually.
Okay, so we don't want to use the omnibus method, okay?
Not for discussion action.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to K1, one at a time, okay?
We should be able to have a motion and a second. Well, the agenda's already there, so I'm sorry.
Okay. So we'll look at K1 and I'll read it out. Approve contracts for the state-approved companies for 2014, 2015 to provide Title I Supplemental Services, SES, in accordance with the No Child Left Behind legislation. Do we have a motion to accept?
We should be able to make that motion as a block to accept it, but then take each item individually to vote on.
No, it needs, each item needs to be discussed and voted on individually.
Okay. I thought that's what we agreed on. Okay. So do we have a motion to accept?
So moved, but I have discussion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we have discussion, please.
I'd just like to know the companies, and I know these are the state-approved companies. I just wanted to know if they are tracking the progress of our students and do we have any data on the success of our students? And if they have, if we've noticed a significant improvement in student performance for the identified students receiving these services?
Linda Minor Gunduk respond to your concerns.
Good evening, Vice President Ayala, esteemed board members, and Acting Superintendent, interim Superintendent Muhammad Islam. I wanted to address the question that you had, Ms. O'Kelly. We have seen some. It is varied, but we have seen some. This is a No Child Left Behind funding that comes through our Title I program from the state. And we give the parents the option of choosing their provider... state and we give the parents the option of choosing their providers, their service providers, for their students. And then we allow the providers to perform those services that are requested, depending on the student test scores that we see and that are provided for us.
How often do the students receive services?
Well, it depends because we receive a certain amount of funding for the providers, for the services, for the program, the SES program. And then depending on the students that we have in those schools that qualify, then that funding is divided into those amount of students. And then it actually will then depend on how much each of these providers charge. Some providers charge more, some providers charge less. And the parents during a provider fair that we actually already had are able to talk to the providers and then choose which providers they want to work with. And they are well aware when they choose their provider, how many sessions that will include because they are aware of what the provider is charging for each of those students. So it comes down to per hour.
Did they do any kind of like pre and post testing or progress monitoring?
Yes, they do. They're required to do a pre and post testing for each of those students so that at the end of the services, then we are able to see what progress has been made and then make decisions from that point on. But we do not have the right to tell the parents not to choose a particular provider because maybe scores are not as good or the outcomes are not as good with other providers. That is entirely up to the parent.
Ms. O'Kelly, this also goes into the Title I report, how students performed with the pre and post towards the end of the year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get any other discussions, comments? Just vote. Okay, and this is only by board members? Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is K2, approve overcrowding relief grant, org, for the J Hugh Middle School Classroom Edition Project, reference K 2.1-2. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And second by O'Kelly. And is there discussion? I see no discussion. Vote by both board members?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next, we have K3, award RFP number 14-15-004, copier replacement to Conica Minolta Incorporated for a three-year period. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say that I understand 100% staff's concerns and I appreciate you guys' recommendation. I just wish we would've got a little bit more information about, you know, the whole issue. And it seems kind of, it seems like an uncomfortable position to place board members in a just-take-our-word-for-it type of position. We need to have documentation. We need to have...
Comparisons?
Right. We don't want, it's not that we don't trust any staff members, although maybe some in the past didn't deserve the trust. That's not the case today. The issue is, we want to have, we want more than just a word, your word, for us to trust you. Trust is always earned, it's never given in the first place. And second, we need to have, we're the Board of Education. We need to be armed with the information. My concern is that if we make the change right now without having all of the information, our teachers, our staff members are going to be left without the materials and the tools and supplies that they need. That's my only concern. But if you guys are assuring the board and you're willing to put your name, you're willing to put your word in suggesting and recommending that we make the change right now because you already know the information and you already have all the research and you're asking us to trust you, we'll do so. But if you burn us, well, you know, it's not going to happen twice. So I'm willing to...
And I have opinion too. I have opinion too. We all are human, we do our best, and we make our recommendations. That's why we have a cabinet and that's why we have these meetings. And, you know, it's unfortunate sometimes that information isn't timely or maybe there's differences in opinion, but I pride myself, and I believe this board does, in being fair and with everyone concerned. So it's a voting process that we're going to go through and it was uncomfortable that you had to go up there and I understand that, but we're in support of our staff here. We are in support. And we're also in support of just people in general. But, you know, somebody has to win and somebody has to lose. You know, it's the Lakers versus another team from New York. But anyway, all we need to do is vote and that's what we're here for. It's not an easy job sometimes, but can I call for the vote?
Just a comment. We want to thank Xerox for all the service that they've done over the years here at the district. We don't have anything, you know, against you guys' services or your products, but if staff is recommending and staff is asking us to trust them, they've done the research, they did the process, they allowed you guys to bid, even though we don't have all the information in front of us, I still would like to see it, you know, later. But we just want you guys to know that we appreciate you taking the time to come here and give us your side of the story. But so far, these people haven't given us any reason not to trust their word. And if they just truly believe that they're doing what, they're asking us to do what's in the best interest of the district, that's what we're going to do regardless of who the company or the name is. And we do thank you guys. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Montes, and I will provide you the information that you're asking for. I apologize that you didn't receive in advance because we're still working on the printer side of the proposals, as you heard from Daniel tonight. So I will present to you the compare apple to apple, so at least you can see where we're going and why. So as you heard, Mr. ...
Next time, get it to us first.
Yes, I'll do that. Again, I apologize, but fact of the matter, I've been working on this contract last two years, since I've been in districts. I came from the large districts. I know what the operating budget for copier and printer. And I've used Xerox before. I know their business. I've dealt with them. And I've been dealing with their senior management for the last two years. This is no surprise to them. Perhaps, gentlemen, he's here tonight, this is new to them, but this is ongoing discussions. I have, Mr. Distrello, I've been talking to them ongoing. And end product, you see, to the bidding process, they're not lowest bidder. That's kind of, it's a legal process. We did not ask them that, what to, how to bid, what, no, no. We give them, here's the product, show you price, and this is the price they gave us.
Thank you, Mohamed. Can I call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. K4, award bid number 14-15-002, site work for toilet installation project to Hinckley and Associates, reference K4 dot 1. Can I get a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
No, if they want that job, they can have it.
Let me just take a quick look here.
I may give you a quick, these items, board, as you know, our KC Elementary and Myers Elementary, this is restroom conditions and our students, we don't have enough restroom for our students, our staff. This is way overdue. You know, we finally, we said, we need to do this. And I personally went to the school to see the conditions. This is absolutely, the school being, staff and students are being, really, it's very problematic that they didn't have enough restrooms for boys and girls and the staff. So this is, this is a kind of a help the school conditions, you know, to build additional portable.
Mohamed, I have a question. Fund 25, is that tied in to Measure Y?
No.
Beautiful.
Can we write out what the fund is? What is Fund 25?
It's on the agenda. It's the developer fees we collect from the developer fees. When you do any improvement, house, home improvement, anything, we collect fees, the school, district collects fees.
Thank you, Mohamed.
So that's the money. And the money goes back to the school.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Then we call for the vote. K4?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have K5. Approve the option year two renewal agreement with Practical for Medical Local Educational Agency, LEA, billing option services effective November 15th, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, reference K5 dot 1. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved, but I have discussion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, and I also have discussion.
Okay, Mr. Martinez. Okay, let's start the discussions.
Well, I'd like to know, since we hired this company to oversee MAH, how much money have we received back? Because we're paying them $60,000 a year, which I feels, I don't recall ever getting quite, well, I think one year we got $75,000 back in MAH. But are we getting more than we're paying this company? Because otherwise, it's not really worth it.
Linda, please, could you answer to the board concerns?
Good evening, Vice President.
Good evening, again.
And board members and interim superintendent Mohamed Islam. We do have some figures that we have gathered together for you regarding the LEA billing. LEA billing is different from MAH. The services that are provided and the services that we're able to bill for are different. But currently, in that account, we do have additional monies that we'll pay for up to the $60,000. Now, we don't, we won't necessarily be billed $60,000, but it can be up to that. And then if we are billed over that, then we receive a 10% back from the Practical. But at this point, we do have $711,621. Thousand, I'm sorry.
I was going to say.
See, the decimal, the decimal is there.
Whoa. $711 million.
I don't know. That's, we're rolling in the deep. $711,621. So is what we have right now in that account.
To spend.
To spend, yes. Now, some of that money has been encumbered for different things, different things that we're providing for students that have been approved through the LEA collaborative, but that is the balance as it stands today.
Well, I think one of the best things, and this is just off the cuff, that we need to look at for spending that money, is to bring back our Donna Loeffler Health Clinic. Because that was a godsend to parents when we had that free clinic where they could go and get shots and things like that. So that might be something district needs to look at.
And then actually, I would like to give the microphone over to Norma Del Rio. She has a few words to say. We're jointly overseeing this collaborative.
So that money has accumulated among the years that we've been looking at this and I have experienced doing this for many, many years. And so I have to tell you that we looked at it together and we've come to the agreement and we shared our concerns with our associate superintendent and superintendent that we can maximize this. We're not bringing in nearly, I would say, not even, probably maybe half of what we could be bringing in annually. So in working together and working with Practical, which is a very good company, I've worked with Practical and Paradigm and B T before, they're all good companies. Because what happens is that you have to, it's our responsibility to maximize and get the billings and making sure that people are filling them out. And we want to make sure we're getting the billings back. And the billings are mostly from nurses, from speech therapists, and from psychologists. And we are thinking about bringing a couple of other positions that will help us that at the same time will pay for itself and generate money. So we have put in a, putting in a system where on the 10th of every month, we're going to make sure everybody's giving their billing in because it hasn't been 100% participation. And one of the things we've identified is because a lot of the money doesn't go back to those particular people, not per se persons, but to enhance services in those areas, there's not like a real carrot or motivator to do it. So we're going to think of different ways to say, hey, you know, we do need these things. And I agree, we need more in the mental, mental health, in the health, and in the social. And all that encumbers all the services. Now, keep in mind that we can only bill for kids who have IEPs. So the other thing I'm making, we're making sure, is that we are making sure that all treatment plans are in the IEP. If a child's assigned a health aid, it's in the IEP. Because if you don't put it in there, then you can't bill it.
Okay.
And we're making sure that all our staff has the proper credentialing and licenses so we can bill even more for them. Okay? So you'll see more money.
Okay, thank you.
Don't leave just yet. May I?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Couple of questions. The easy one is, when November 15th through June 30th?
The original contract that was signed in November of 2012 went from November to November.
Okay.
And so that's why, and now on the recommendation of our fiscal department, they wanted the contract to actually end at the end of our fiscal year.
We're trying to balance our years, okay.
I just want to say that you had approved previously for it to be from November to November, but fiscal is telling us that it's just cleaner to end it at the end of the fiscal year.
Makes sense.
Which makes more sense, and that's why we're having to bring it back to re, have it approved.
Okay. Now, how long is it taking to get our money back? Because the figure is all good and well, but the last thing I heard, we weren't getting the money timely. It takes a year, 18 months to get any funds back?
Okay, so like Linda said, there's two different ones. There's the MAH, which is the Medi-Cal Administrative Activities, which in the past meant that we could bill for a person like me who's not a school psychologist, giving services or a speech therapist. But you get, you can claim for me, for people like principals and counselors referring kids to helping them out, fill out an application for Medi-Cal, referring them to clinics. So we can get reimbursed for activities like that, okay? Talking to them about it, holding an IEP, being an IEP, talking about it, those kinds of things. Those are the activities, not direct services to the children. That type of money takes longer. Usually takes about a year. Right now, it's taking longer because there were audits that were conducted and they found a lot of irregularities in the districts across the state. So now they're going to do like a time, like a time type of survey, but a different kind. And they're doing what's called a random moment. So the ones that are immediate are the Medi-Cal, the Medi-Cal direct services to children, which are testing by the psychologist, any type of counseling by psychologists or clinical counselors, direct speech services and direct nursing services. Those are immediate. That money, there's a quick turnaround. We see them like every, we could see them as fast as two, three months, and I've never seen them go beyond a year. So that money, we see ongoing. It just depends how fast we're billing. And what's good is that Linda and I talked about that, we know you can go back and retrieve money for one whole calendar year. So right now, we're collecting all the October from last year that we missed. And then we're going to go and collect the rest of them. So we get that money.
Can we spend the money on special ed?
And spend the money on mental health and social services, which includes the health, which includes nurses too.
I just also want to remind the board that we've had a number of different agencies or companies help us with our MAH billing and some haven't always worked out to the best interest of the district. And as a matter of fact, some were even pointed out in the FICMAT report, which I'll get to in a minute because we had a lot, we have a lot of questions regarding FICMAT. The FICMAT concluded that we were actually fined by the state $600,000 because of wrongly fraudulent claims, medical billing claims that were done in the past by other people that helped us with that type of service. So I'm glad that you guys...
But wasn't one of the companies?
No, no, this wasn't one of the companies, no. No.
What you're talking about was not one of the companies?
No, no.
That was an individual.
Well, it was also a company. It was also a company.
Okay, okay.
So what I want to say is, we got to keep in mind that we want to remedy a lot of the FICMAT issues. We want to remedy a lot of the mistakes that we've done in the past. Someone said earlier, we don't want to look at the past. Well, we need to look at the past so we don't make the mistakes in the future going forward. So I think switching it from November to the end of the fiscal year is a good idea. I don't know why nobody else thought of it, but we thank you guys and whoever else from fiscal thought of it. It makes total sense. Start the fiscal, end it the fiscal year and then if they get... Start the fiscal, end, end it the fiscal year, and then if they get it again, restart it again when it starts. But there has been big issues, and, and we want to make sure that we bring in an agency, a company that's going to help us with our, with our MA and, and our billing, and not wind up costing us money like other previous providers did, you know, in the hundreds of thousands.
Well, I do want to respond to that to say that you probably weren't the only district. And the discrepancies were not found so much in the Medi-Cal portion, which is the direct service. It was found more in the time surveys conducted by school districts more so. And there were not as many check and balances by, by the Department of Healthcare Services as well. These companies teach you how to maximize, but we all need to be honest in what we're writing down. They'll do the data collection, the transmission, the eligibility verification, the, they'll do the things like the claims reconciliation, but they know health better than we do because we're not a health agency. We're an educational agency. And probably the only people that probably are the closest is the special ed department because we do most of it. But in no way should perform, even though I've supervised nurses for twenty-some years, am I a nurse, right? So it's important that when you do do these billings, you always put in place with these companies to say, I as the director and her as a director are going to look at those billings and say, this looks right, and sign off. That they're not just submitted. And some companies were just submitting, or some directors were signing off, not understanding. So I think what is really good about what we're doing is that we're a team. She's looking at it from a different angle. Because I always think, yeah, I'd like to do it like I always did, but you know what? I need a, we need a different set of eyes to build capacity. And also, because my department generates a lot of the money, that it's not look, well, sure, she's going to take all the money back. That's not what this is about. It's about the kids and, and, you know, promoting more services for them. So I thank her because she has a lot of experience with the math and all that part, right? And I, and I'll just make sure we're collecting the data and making sure it's correct.
And collecting the money.
So we make a good team. Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
We, okay.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So then we just call for the vote on item K five.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we have K six. Ratifying agreement with the law offices of Guterres, Fiero, and Erickson to further review the FICMAT report and the documentation supporting the report. Do I have a motion to accept?
Moved to accept.
Do we have a?
And I have discussion.
I'll, I'll make the second, and I also have discussion.
Okay, and I have a discussion.
I, I, listening to people talking earlier, I want to mention, it's often misleading to read agenda items or minutes without having the background or without being privy to the closed session discussion of the board as to why we might be doing something. I just want to make very, very clear, we're not just questioning the FICMAT report. There is a purpose to us doing this, and I can't say any more than that. But trust us, we're, we're not just losing our minds here. We're, we're, we have a purpose.
If I may?
Okay.
The, 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 the item is asking to have a respected, experienced law firm that works with multiple cities, has worked with multiple school districts all over, all over Southern California, and, and recently with our, here with our local city government. And, and this, this law firm, what this, what this board is asking, particularly, particularly some board members on this board, is asking this legal law firm to do is, look at the FICMAT findings and give us a legal analysis on where we go from here. Where we go from, what do we do with the findings? They need to get the information from the district, all of the records, all of the contracts, all of the billings, the invoices, look at all that with a fine-tooth comb, and then tell us whether or not we can go after people for restitution or companies.
I didn't think I could say that.
We need to know that. If people, if, if people wrongly charged this district, or contracts were approved without board approval, and there's any monies that can be recollected to this district, then it's owed to this district. And we have a due diligence to make sure that, we don't just get a report and say, okay, that's it. We can't look at the past, we need to move forward. There's people in this district, I'm sure, that would like for us to not look, not investigate those findings of the FICMAT report. But we need to go above and beyond and do our due diligence to see if, who knows? There might even be criminal charges that might come of this. We don't know. We're not lawyers. We, we don't have a legal team. We don't have paid staff members that are attorneys. We have to contract out to attorneys. We need to know if any monies are recoverable. We need to know if anybody needs to be charged with a crime. We need to know these things. We can't answer these questions. The public can't answer these questions for us, but a legal expert can offer legal advice and tell us whether or not we can, we can recover some of these monies. We can sue some of these people or companies. If they say, you know what, there's nothing you can do, then I think whatever small amount of money we pay for someone to tell us, you know what, we looked at everything, there's nothing you can do, statute of limitations ran out, there's nothing, okay, well, at least we did our part. At least we did our due diligence to find out and get a straight answer. If we don't do it, people are just going to be running around. What kind of message are we going to send? That anyone could come to Rialto Unified and, and just pick our pockets and walk away?
Well said, Mr. Montes. And if I had known I could have said all that, I would have.
Mr. Martinez.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Ayala. You know, whatever questions we look at, I, I'm for looking at it, not, not a problem. Are you? Yes, but we really can avoid looking back by asking the same questions of every contract going forward as of tonight. So the, the real problem is, we don't do that. There's no cost to do it beforehand. Going back, there is a cost. The first question we need to ask before we authorize ten thousand dollars is, has a statute of limitations passed? If it has, then stop. We don't need you to look into that. We can't get any more money. We're spending bad money. That, that is my opinion, and the community's spoken about law firms that they, they question. So I don't, I don't know. I am for looking into the FICMAT. I am for looking with the same fine-tooth comb at everything we do from here on forward. And I'm looking for board support in doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I have a few questions myself and comments. First, I want to address to Mohammed. In, in our closed session, if you look at today's agenda in closed session, you have item four and five. Number four says pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six dash nine, pending litigation. Below that, it says conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. To my understanding, in our closed session discussions a couple of board meetings ago, we qualified, we qualified the discussion that, under one of these two areas.
Right.
So in other words, we listed that discussion under four or, or five. I don't recall which one it was. Am I correct?
You're, you're correct. This is the legal counsels, how they want, item need to be on the agenda is.
Thank you.
To comply with the Brown Act.
Okay, because, you know, we don't want to get ourselves blocked, wedged in a corner. With that being said, we heard a lot of discussion tonight on special ed, and we, we, we heard the outcry of parents. Being a teacher myself, I can remember being in the trenches, and we were sometimes divided because we, we wanted help as teachers, but we didn't want to empower parents because, you know, we would lose perhaps, perhaps flexibility in doing our daily assignments. We're not here to overpower either group. That's what makes this so difficult. But when you hear these parents and you see them time and time again at these meetings, you know that they are concerned. And I will say this, to bring somebody in that is not connected with our community was perhaps an insensitive way to deal with these important issues. I am prepared to stay after tonight's meeting and accept an invitation, and if I have to go to the church, it isn't that I have to, I want to go there, and I want to listen to those discussions. Obviously, there's not three of us going to be there, but there can be two board members. We'll try to find a resolution. But to ask board members to do this on a continual basis is perhaps out of our realm. That's not what we're supposed to do.
Right.
But, you know, sometimes we have to reach out a little bit. But this is why we're requesting legal counsel. There was two parts to this FICMAT report. One was for special ed, and the other one was contracts. We don't want to overburden the, the plate. There is a lot on that plate right now that a lot of people need to understand. The reason we have those closed sessions, meetings, is so that we protect the rights of individuals. And that's who we are here. We're protecting rights, and we're doing the best we can. And just to give you a little insight on who we want to bring in, okay, there's a Leroy's Haynes Boy Center right down the road. There's nineteen board members sitting on that board. Two of them are judges. One of them is a presiding judge in Los Angeles at the moment. We even have sent some of our kids who needed special services to Leroy Haynes Boy Center. They do marvelous things. Those people don't get paid. And the president of that organization is the person that we're bringing to our community to guide us through, to help our parents, not to overpower teachers, but to bring some balance and support. Those are my comments. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on item K six?
I, I just want to say that I understand the public's concerns. I understand the community's concerns, parents, community members, employees. We've been burned so bad in the past. We've, we've, this district has done a lot of mistakes. This district has spent a lot of monies wastefully. But this is for a good cause. And it's for, and, and it's, and it's a respectable law firm. We need professional legal advice in order to start tackling the issues of the FICMAT audits. We don't need the audit all over again. We have it. We need people to provide us legal advice on whether we can move forward or not on reclaiming some of these monies. Any information that might have been given out to anybody before the meeting or when this item was placed, might have been misinformation, but you're hearing the explanation tonight. And I understand there's people that don't want us to do this. There's people that don't want us to look at correcting or going after some of these possible recoverable monies, but we have to do our due diligence and at least try, or see if we can even go there. That's all I have to say.
I will say, if there's anybody who would like to discuss this afterwards, I'll be happy to stay here. Okay, I will stay. But during this meeting, we're, we're going to vote at this time. So do we have a vote on K six?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
So we have three ayes and one, one no. A motion carries. Next, we have K seven. Approved purchase of Global Positioning System GPS and accept the NAPZONAR hardware grant. Do we have a motion to accept?
Uh, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Martinez, any discussion?
No.
No discussion? We call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approved the installation of the Zoner Hardware Global Positioning System GPS and sixty-three passenger transport vehicles and seven nutritional services vehicles. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number nine, approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel, AHP. Stipulated cases fourteen dash fifteen dash fourteen, fourteen dash fifteen dash thirteen, fourteen dash fifteen dash eleven. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Second.
Discussion? Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have comments from the interim superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Ayala. The Red Raven Week School Decorating Contest will be judged by our Board of Education along with city and fire officials on October twenty-nine from three to five P M. The last Saturday, we have an annual parent summit, was, it was well-attended and very successful. I thank Board of Education, your support, and many of you be there to support our community. I think community really enjoyed this event, and I personally want to say thank you to the board for your support, and it was a, it was a great event. On October thirtieth, the NWCP will honor three of our outstanding high school seniors. These seniors are the top three students with the highest GPA of all seniors in our districts, and they're all Eisenhower High School students. I'll, I'll send you the additional informations, any member of the board like to be at the event, I will send you the informations by Friday. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Marisol, you want to start, lead us with a little comments?
Sure. Thank you. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. So I would just like to give thanks to, once again, to the Kiwanis Club for giving me another certificate, another one, and just really want to say thank you.
Student of the month again?
Yes. Well, it's for the same one, but I'm getting more.
Oh, okay. Well, that's wonderful.
But thank you. And, um, well, good, well, hopefully, everyone has a good night, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Marisol. Ms. Martinez is out. Maybe Ms. O'Kelly, you can.
Sure. And I'm sure Marisol's anxious to get home and go to bed. Okay, um, well, yes, I went to the Curtis Winton Event, and, and it was wonderful and very well-done. I also want wish, to wish everybody a happy Halloween. I didn't have orange, so I wore black, so I guess you could say I'm a witch tonight. I don't know, but trying to get in the spirit. Anyway, I wanted to say that I appreciate receiving the more detailed Measure Y report. However, I do not know if it, how complete it is. For example, the amount of Measure Y funds spent on consultants is not listed in the report. Certain consultants were paid a significant amount of money out of Measure Y. Why are they not included in the report? PMI and Coldwell Flores both were hired by the district to oversee the bond, yet neither company filed the continuing disclosure reports that are required by law. These were done by our own fiscal department. So I need to know why, first of all, why they were not included in the report, because that, to me, looks like we're trying to hide something. And then, second of all, what exactly were they paid for since they did not even complete the required reports at that time? This is back in two thousand eleven and two thousand ten, I guess, back in that time.
Mr. Kelly, if, if, with all due respect, if you want me to sit down with you, those, those company are on the report?
I wouldn't.
If you look at on the, on the.
Listed by name?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check.
And if you, please, any member of the board has concern, I, I welcome you to sit down.
My mistake.
And I like to make it clear, so this is, you requested this, this is time, is the detailed report, where is every dollar spent, and how is it to be spent?
Thank you. I will check over it, and because I did go over it, I don't know how I missed it.
I'd love to do that.
But I still want to know the second part. If you can find out that information, what exactly were they paid for since they did not do what anybody overseeing the bond would do?
Well, as, as you can see, the report relate to the contracts, and the contracts, again, is, is the language of the contract, professional services. And, and it's not tied to any particular project. Example, program management, they're doing oversee of the project of the school districts. Example, program management, they're doing oversee the project of the school districts, which project are tied to every, every monthly fees we paid and not directly connected to the one particular project. It's like a very broad term. So those contracts, if you would like to see it, I can pull it and we can go over together. I have, you know, again...
I've seen some of those contracts.
And, and it's very, very vague, very open.
Yes.
It's nothing...
They can do everything.
You're correct. And, and that's kind of where we are stuck with the contract because it's a legal document and has been signed, approved, and that's where the problem are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, would you do us an honor and be next?
Certainly. All righty. Let me get to my notes here. Okay. I, I'm sorry for it being a late night, but we've got a lot of concerns. I did mention the contracts in viewing all contracts with the same concerns, look going forward as going backwards. We do have Measure Y. We, we have a couple of vacancies on that committee. We are specifically looking for somebody with a tax organization tie to be on the Measure Y committee. So if anyone is interested, you're, you have to be available. The, the last team was not always available and we heard about that. To do business, we need the first session to be about calendars. And those calendars will be developed so that everybody knows on the third, whatever day of the week, we're meeting. We really need the community to step up and we, we hear a lot of concerns about it and it's the same faces, but they may be working during the day or, or, you know, dealing with family essentials. So I'm asking the entire commi, community to do what they, they wish to and help us by coming alongside and dealing with the Measure Y oversight. Okay. You can contact myself or the superintendent's office. It is actually the Fiscal Services Desk that will be dealing with that. Board, I'm inviting you to the first LEGO League Robotics, including Marisol, so that it is November eighth, eight A M. I'm not sure whether it's at Kolb or Rialto Middle, if someone is still here to clarify that, or just shoot me an email?
I think it's at Rialto Middle.
Rialto Middle.
Rialto Middle.
Okay. That is November eighth, eight A M. We are looking for judges.
Eight A M. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Me at eight A M. I'm doing it for the kids. So this is first LEGO League, it's robotics. You will be surprised at how good our kids are.
If I'm not out of the area, I'll participate. This man's got to run a company.
Yeah, I understand. All right. With that, just thank everyone for their concerns and for speaking their mind.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much. And I'm turning it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Vice President, Mr. Ila. A few things. Let me start with the good news. Well, first of all, good evening, everybody. I know it's late. Welcome to another beautiful R U S D Board of Education meeting. Buenas noches, padres y comunidad. Gracias por estar aquí tan tarde. I, I first would like to just piggyback off what some of the things Mr. Islam was saying. Saturday, October eighteenth, we did have our parent summit at Carter High School. It was a very beautiful event. It was very awesome, lot, good turnout, lot of parents, lot of students. But I would like to recommend that we alternate it and maybe next year have it at Rialto High School or Eisenhower High School. We have a lot of space out on that Eisenhower football field. And if we're gonna plan on renewing it pretty soon, maybe we could use it, get a few more uses out of it for some of the activities for parent summit. But I, I do think we need to alternate it. We can't have it always at Carter. Carter's a beautiful school, it's a big school, it's nice and everything, but we need to also give parents and students that have transportation difficulties be able to go to their local high school and have their parent summit there. But other than that, it was a beautiful event, very nicely well put together. And I want to thank Ms. Saeda Joffre for being the host with the most and, you know, and doing an awesome job there with the microphone. And of course, I want to thank all, all of the city dignitaries too that were there and people from outside our community that were there. The other thing I, I did want to also speak about was the October tenth, that I also attended the October tenth, Friday, Curtis Winton renaming ceremony at the Parent Institute. That was also the ribbon cutting, the renaming of, of the Parent Institute to the Curtis Winton Parent Institute at the Delora Swerte Sister Chavez. It, it was a really nice event, you know, and, and it was, it was, it was something special for his family, for his wife, for the community. And, and, you know, I, I, I just want to say that it was, it was an awesome night. We were there, most of us, almost, I think all the board members were there, even our student board member was also in attendance. So it was a really nice event, very well deserved for Mr. Winton's sacrifice for the Parent Institute. Again, I want to offer some constructive criticism, you know, and as a board member, as a supervisor of this governing body, I'm entitled to criticize, I prefer to criticize constructively when I have to, even if I have to do it publicly. I don't mind doing it publicly, so you can imagine, much less, I don't mind doing it out of a public view. And, and a few of the things was, please, please, staff, please get us all of the information. You know, what, what some of these gentlemen had to go through here tonight was a little embarrassing and uncomfortable. What our staff members had to go through tonight was a little embarrassing and uncomfortable. And, and as board members, I believe for some of us, it was embarrassing and uncomfortable. So please give us the information. Armed with the research, what you know and what you researched, get us that before we come to the board meetings. Because we never know if these gentlemen wouldn't have showed up and gave part of their story or their side of the story, we wouldn't have had the questions raised, the issues that we did tonight. So in case that does happen in the future, even if they don't come, if no one comes, just get us the info so we're armed with the information we need to make good decisions. Because I was really concerned when, when the fact, the, the idea was brought up that we might leave some of our people, you know, struggling for supplies or having to go out of their way to get them. The other thing also was, we, I, I heard someone mention safety and security of our children in our schools. Of course, that's why this board decided to do an assessment of our Safety and Security Department recently at the last board meeting. We haven't had an assessment, an operational assessment of our Safety and Security Department in many years. It's not to criticize anyone, it's not that we don't believe in anyone. We need to know exactly how to better serve and how to better make sure that our, the operations of the department is being ran in tip-top shape. And if they need resources or they need more, more staff members, whatever it is that they need or don't need, we need to correct it. That's the only way we're going to improve. The district entirely, but we want to go department, one department at a time, one area at a time. We've got so many issues. That's why we decided to pay what we, what we're going to have to pay to do that assessment. We, nobody here is qualified to do it. No one in the district, the board members can't do it, the staff members can't do it. Sometimes we have to pay a little bit to get these types of services, to do these types of assessments. I don't like wasteful spending of taxpayers' money. I'm a taxpayer. You know, and I don't like, I don't like wasting taxpayers' money, but we do have to spend the tax dollars of this district when it's, when it's warranted and when it's for good reason. So we want to make sure that, that our chief and all of our officers have the supplies, whatever it is, the resources, the programs, the training, whatever it is that this study's going to give us, we want to make sure that we, we give them what they need. Our kids deserve it. And, and I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. Communication. And, and I'm not, I'm, and I'm not even doing this assessment, but I can tell you one thing right now. Communication is lacking. This meeting started at five thirty. We didn't have anybody here from Safety and Security, and it's not their fault. And it's not their fault. There is a communication breakdown. Somebody, staff members, and here's where the constructive criticism comes, should have made sure that Safety and Security knew that we were changing our board meeting time today, because normally we start at six. But how do we expect them to be here at five thirty and doing their job and...
I was here at five thirty, Mr. Montes. I don't want to disagree, but I was here at five thirty and security was here.
Okay, let's not get into...
I, I didn't see anybody, I didn't see anybody in here. I didn't see anybody in here.
Doing okay?
And I was told that, and I was told that they were not informed of the time that the board meeting was going to be started. It's a communication issue. It's just one small minor thing. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's constructive criticism for staff, because staff needs to make sure that they notify our Safety and Security Team of the time that the board meetings are going to start, the time that the closed session meeting is going to start, because we never know who might walk through these doors. We don't have metal detectors. We don't have any security guards patting people down like they do at the courts. Anyone could come through those doors armed. So we want to make sure that our Safety and Security Team is here before anybody gets here and during the time that people are here. And it's not their fault. It was a communication breakdown and because the constructive criticism is to make sure that there's communication and staff is notifying them of when we need them to be here. I don't, I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about everybody else here in this room, people in the audience, parents, people of the community, employees, other board members. I know Judo. I'm not worried about it. But I do worry, as a supervisor and as a board member, I do worry about some minor things like that.
Thank you.
The, you're welcome. You're welcome. The, the, the other, the other thing, the FIGMAT, you know, the FIGMAT issues, it, it's just, we need to do something. We've got the two reports in January, the special ed report and the selective, selective contracts. Let me remind everybody, the, the selective contracts FIGMAT report was a twelve thousand dollar audit of just a few, a handful of contracts. The special ed audit by FIGMAT was a forty-eight thousand dollar thorough, thorough audit, in-depth audit of the whole program, of the whole department, the program. If we would have spent the same amount of money that we did on the special ed audit that, on, on the selective contracts and looking at a number of contracts, not just the selective, well, what else would we have discovered aside from all of those embarrassing things that were discovered in those FIGMAT audits? What else would have came to light? Was it necessary to go there and spend more than what we did? Obviously not, because just by reviewing a handful of contracts, look at all the dirt that was uncovered. But now that we have that information, we need to move forward. We need to address those issues. We can't bury them, we can't, we can't sweep them under the rug. We can't just say, oh, wow, now people are no longer here, let's not worry about it, let's move forward. No. If there was wrongs that were committed, they need to be looked at and they need to be addressed. And if they're not, then we're not doing our due diligence. Regarding the Measure Y, this is the second time that we, we're provided with a separate report for Measure Y. This is not what we're asking for. This is not what, I don't, I don't think this is what Nancy's asking for. This is very vague information. This is names and numbers and a small type of expenditure of what it was spent on. This is not the type of information, at least for me, that I'm interested in getting on Measure Y. We want to know what these companies did, not a, not a ceramic inquiry tile, plumbing, testing. We don't want just one word explanations. We want to know what are these companies, Measure Y was thirty-seven, thirty-six million dollars that were spent? Where did those monies go? Not just who, who got paid for it and for what? We want to know, for example, there was a consultant that got paid to come to the, to the oversight committee meetings, stuff like that. That's not in here. So perhaps maybe, again, you know, and I, and I hate, I hate to say it, but maybe we need a fresh pair of eyes, people from outside of the district to look at this kind of stuff. We have the DeLinka Group. Why don't you, why don't we ask them to look at this? We need a report. How did we spend the Measure Y? Where did those thirty-seven million dollars go? How were they spent? Not just, uh, this company was paid this much for electrical. It's very vague information and I think what we need is a review and if staff can't do the review, then let us know.
Well, if I may, Board, I, I want to survey what you're looking for. That's my goal. Perhaps maybe I'll pull every, every bill. When you say electrical, are you looking for how many switch to change this room? How many, again, these are, when you say vague, you know, I'm, I want to be honest with you, again, these are the contract. Plumber is a plumber, electrical engineers or contractor, contractor. If perhaps you're looking for every detailed itemized invoice, maybe that's probably looking for to see through and we can pull that. I want to make sure I'm meeting your need. My purpose not to mislead or, this is every dime we spend through, through the Measure Y money, as of, as of the date of the report. If you want to examine every single document for, since two thousand twelve, yes, we can pull that and put in a, you know, present to you. And again, I, I don't know, there's any...
It's two thousand eleven. First bonds were sold in two thousand eleven.
You're right, but, but we, again, from the time we sold the bond, the, we didn't spend on March two thousand eleven. By the time we bring the contract, the due process, let's say two thousand eleven, I don't dispute that. My point is, if Board is interested to examine or review every single invoice, contract, yes, we can do that, that's all, we have a record here. We cannot pull this information without going through those files and record. And, and even though Board, you, you can see that what you received tonight, that those items went through the approval by the governing board. We cannot bring a contract without your approval. So I provide those information to you to ensure that nothing bypasses our board. The fact of the matter, Mr. Montes, I, I may apologize, if I, if you don't mind, I'm going to finish my statement. If you are interested to look at every single documents, yes, we can do that.
No, that's not what we want. I just need to examine this in a little more detail. And, and if I have questions, I will get back.
Please, you know, I, I welcome every one of you. I will sit down with you. I'll pull every document and maybe we can sit down together. My goal is to make sure you're satisfied what I'm serving to you in a way not misleading you, because this not, it's all record. This is all public record. Anybody can ask for it. And I, I want to do that, but it seems like perhaps I need more clarity myself. If you want to sit down with me, with my staff, and I want my staff, she's a professional auditor, she's a certified public accountant, and she prepared this document for me. I did not delegate to someone I can, I don't have confidence. So I, please, I'm asking you, I don't want to...
Well, maybe we can come in and look at that information, maybe get clarification. I appreciate it. And I just want to wrap it up. Public records requests, the board, the entire board has been C C'd on multiple public records requests through email by various media sources and other agencies and people. And, and I think that the board has already been clear on making sure that we protect our staff members' safety and the safety of their families. Anything outside of that, that does not have to do with jeopardizing any, any employee's safety or the safety of their families, anything outside of that should be handed over. It should be given. I'm getting sick and tired of getting email after email requests and public documents that people are making and they're not getting. And I know there's a lot to do. I, I know you guys have a lot on your plate. I know, Mr. Islam, you have a lot on your plate. You know, just operating the day-to-day operations of the district is, is big enough, but the public is entitled to review any public records that are public records and are not attorney-client privileged and are, and do not jeopardize the safety of any employees or their families. So please hand that over. If you have too much to do, you can delegate authority. You have three now associate superintendents currently that you can delegate authority to and, and even other directors if you have to. But we want to make sure public records requests are being met from whoever asks them, because they're entitled to review those documents. they're entitled to review those documents. So let's really, you know, get on the ball with that and make sure that we're complying. Other than that, I want to wish everybody a good night. I thank everybody for being here so late and coming here and addressing and raising your concerns. I hope that we were able to give some information that, or some answers to people that raise some questions and concerns, but the bottom line is, we have to do our due diligence. We can't say, don't look at the past. We have to look at the past in order to correct it and make sure that we're moving forward and not going down the same road, making the same mistakes as previously, as previously done. And the last thing I want to say is, Mr. Martinez spoke about it a while back, and I just want to say, you know, I want to encourage the community, you know, to make sure you guys vote November 4th. It's democratic responsibility, it's one of our responsibilities as citizens of this country to participate in the democratic process and vote. So I encourage everyone to vote, whoever you vote for, vote, por favor voten. Thank you and good night.
Well, thank you, Mr. Montes. It is now 10:39, and I think one thing we can agree on is that it's been a long night. And it kind of reminds me of when I was raising my daughters and they were living at home, and one said, Dad, I want to go to the movies. And I says, oh, okay, we can go to the movies. Then the other one says, I don't want to go to the movies. And I said, but your mom's not here, your grandma's out of town, it's just the three of us. Wow, what do I do? Where's the manual? How do I figure this, this out? I figured it out, I said, you know what? It's real simple, we take turns. We're gonna go to the movies, and then next time, you can pick what you want to do. You know, tonight was one of those nights, you know, because I look in the audience and I see people that are very, very deserving of being listened to and for us to try to cooperate fully, 100%, but when you do that, then you have another person tugging at you saying, no, but you can't do that, I need help. So we have that. We also have professionals here with companies who maybe didn't get their turn this time, but what I'm saying is, don't give up on us, there may be another turn down the road. You know, what's that old saying, a house divided will not stand. And, you know, we've got a lot on the plate still, and if we get distracted up here and start getting pulled apart, we're gonna hurt, but we're starting to work together here. We're not arguing, we just have little differences, but, you know, democracy can be a little bit noisy. But it is important, because what I want to say is that we empowered our parents not too long ago, maybe a couple years ago, but the problem was, not one resolution ever came in writing to this board. We needed an agenda so we could vote on it. That's gonna change, not to the point where we disregard our staff, it's got to be fair, there's got to be balance, and that's what makes it tough. But we're hoping to empower our parents, and we may have to start somewhere like meeting at the church or something, but so that when they have their meetings, they have somebody there that can guide them through with writing a resolution that works, and it may be just a small one, but once you see how it works, all of a sudden, you don't have to spend your evenings here at night when, you know, maybe you could spend your time with your families, because I do know that you care, we all know that you care. You know, let's make sure that our house here stands tall, and it will stand tall, and it will shine, and it will do that if we continue to work together. I'm going to close tonight, because it saddens me to announce the passing of two beloved employees of the Rialto Unified School District. Mr. Samuel Fellows, a former Eisenhower High School counselor since 1972. He passed away on Saturday, October 11th, 2014, he was 70 years old, dedicated 42 years to this school district. Mrs. Lourdes Wingo, who was a secretary at the district office and later held services for 30 years, passed on Saturday, October 11th at 7:00 p.m., UCLA Medical Hospital. She was 60 years old. The memorial services for Mr. Wingo, Mrs. Wingo, was held privately. The services for Mr. Fellows, home-going, will be held this Saturday, October 25th. Continental Breakfast will be hosted from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Ecclesia Christian Fellowship, located at 1314 East Date Street in the city of San Bernardino. The public service will begin at 11:00 a.m. Our thoughts are with both the Fellows and Wingo families in their time of great loss. Please join me in a moment of silence for the two families and the two past employees. We thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Preferential vote by board member.
Aye.
And we had a second?
Yes, share.
Okay. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. It is 10:44.